All right, it's nine, we're gonna call this board supervisors meeting the orders. Can I get an invitation for you, uh, Mr. Pratt?
Yes. My little doubt is, O wise and eternal Father, we thank you well, Lord, for allowing us to see another day. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you remain all unfuried and glorified. And Father, we just ask, oh God, first, oh God, just to pray for the ones that are out in Texas, oh God, the people that may have lost their children in the flood, oh God, Father, we ask that you cover them, oh God. Father, continue to protect the first responders as they go in. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you give healing hearts, oh God, to that community, to that state, and to this country, oh God. And Father, we just pray, oh God, for the business in this county, in this city, in this state, and to ask, oh God, that you open doors, oh God. Father, continue to bless our elected officials, oh God. Father, continue to give them strength and power from Ohio, oh God, to lead and govern your people. Father, continue to keep them close together, oh God, that one may not fall far from others. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to look after our first responders, our nurses, our doctors, oh God, today. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to bless Masses Adams County, uh, to the fullest, oh God, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Time for the prayers.
Gladly, please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Gray.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Mr. Middleton.
Present.
There he is. Ms. Dean.
Present.
Randy Lewis, on vacation. Mr. Slower.
Here.
And Ms. Con.
Here.
All right. I need a motion to approve the minutes for June of twenty-five.
So will I.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
No, sir, Mr. President, just Mr. Middleton, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the document. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the quarterly financial reports for Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chancellor Kirk, and the purchasing report.
So will I.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any nays, motion carried. Special presentations, if any. Any special presentation? All right, county business. Fred Parker.
For the board, um, what I'm about to hand out, if you would, let's say, pass these around. About the past year, I've been having clients who call me and say, Fred, I have a bill from a hospital, and I'm in collections, and it's the first bill I've got. What you're looking at here is the general consent that I, it's my personal general consent that I've signed when I was getting an MRI at the hospital. And when I did this, I went into the, 'cause I've been having these calls, I'm in collections, I've never gotten a bill, I'm in collections, I've never gotten a bill. So when I went in there, I asked for this, you know, they give to you to sign, and I leaned back and I started reading it. And the young lady said, are you gonna read that? I said, man, let's read everything I signed. And she said, well, may I make you a copy? And I said, sure. So all of us, when we go to the hospital, and I'm not picking on our hospital, 'cause a lot of them do this, not all of them. But if you turn the page to number four, and some of you may have it highlighted, but that's the communications section. When you sign that, you are giving, I gave Maryland Hospital the right to bill me on my telephone. Now, federal law requires that they give me an opt-out. They give me a chance to say, no, I don't wanna do this. However, they do not do it on the front end. The only chance that the employees of the county, or anybody that goes to the hospital, gets to opt out of this is you get a text, and it says, this is from the hospital, and you owe X amount. Now, that being said, all of us are trained these days, if you see a bill or a charge come on your phone, you must assume it's a scam. Right. I mean, you do. I do. Uh, we're all trained to do that. I get about three things a week saying I owe money, or they want money, something about money. So however, when you get that first text on the phone, if you read it closely, most people just see they owe money, and they just go, this is a scam, and they ignore it. Then they get the second text, and they ignore it. And then, I believe, the third bill you get is a paper bill, but by then, you're at ninety days. And, uh, that being said, when you get that first text, if you read it, at the bottom, you can type stop in where the message is, where you can type a message, type stop, and that is your opt-out. That's the first chance you get to opt out. Now, I've been trying, working with some people, some friends I know that are going to the hospital, and I don't know how long it takes, once you type stop, for you then to start getting paper bills. I would imagine it doesn't happen real quick. And I'm bringing this up, I'm not trying to bash our local hospital, we have some of the finest healthcare professionals in the state working there. It's the system, uh, when you go into, and I've been, I spoke with Scott about this, the contract you sign, and this is a contract, is called a contract of adhesion, thank you, Scott. And what that means is, is a take it or leave it contract. So when I went in for my MRI, if I would've said, I'm not signing any of this, they would've probably said, well, you can't get an MRI. So, uh, that being said, I'm just trying to make everybody aware, and I'm gonna get something out to all the departments to let the employees know, you're gonna get a bill on your phone, and you can type stop. Uh, 'cause I know I like paper bills when it comes from a healthcare provider. I don't like to just see an amount on my phone and assume it's correct. I helped a, uh, a fellow that's here today, he texted me last week with a bill, uh, from a hospital, and I checked it out with Blue Cross, and they were wanting another five hundred or something. Turns out, he's already overpaid by two of them. So that's why you want a paper bill, I mean, to my way of thinking, 'cause when you get the bill on the text, it's not explicit, it doesn't tell you a whole lot. Uh, in this same document, if you look at number five and six, facility director, you're giving them the right to put your name where people can call and say, is my friend Ricky Gray in the hospital? Yes, he is, but, you know. But they give you an opt-out there. If you look at the, oh, at the very last sentence in number five, I opt out of the facility director. Then you can look at number six, admission, discharge, and transfer notifications. They give you an opt-out. So my question is, in terms of the bill you get on your phone, the communications on number four, why don't you get an opt-out on the front end there about getting a telephonic bill? That's just my way of looking at it, but, uh, then if you go on and you look at number fifteen, and all of us are aware that, uh, these days, in and or out of network, the good thing about Blue Cross, it is really hard to get out of network, 'cause ninety-nine percent of providers pay it. However, in here, uh, it says that, uh, that, you know, these providers you may encounter in the hospital that aren't of the hospital can bill you separately. And I'm looking for one sentence, uh, the list of, okay, and I understand that these providers can bill me separately. The list of such specialists is available on the facility's website. It is not. Or upon request. So if you wanna know who works there that's not in network, and it also says, uh, that a list of the insurance companies they take is on the website, they are not. And again, that's why I pretty much died a little Blue Cross person, 'cause it's hard to get out of network. And again, my whole thrust with this is to educate and to educate the employees, the supervisors, the department heads, and, uh, I've gotta do this with the aldermen, too, to let people know what, read what you sign. Now, also included in this document is your patient's bill of rights. Most people don't know they even have one. So it's listed, I don't know the page number, but it says notice of patient's rights and responsibilities. So I think that's crucial, 'cause someone, all of us, at some point in time, will be in the hospital. I was in an emergency room, I had what's called heat centry, and I fainted about six times, my blood pressure was crazy. And I'd been in that room for about four hours, and hadn't had water in about six or eight. And I started, I was saying, I need water, I need water, and finally, they offered me water, and I said, I know my patient's rights. I want some water, or I'm getting up and walking out. And they brought me water. But, uh, I just wanted to go over this with everyone today, and, you know, you can keep this and read it at your leisure. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's mine, it's got my signature on it, doesn't matter, but you may want to read that. And in your, uh, people you're gonna run across in your districts that may wonder about this kind of stuff, you may wanna let them know about it. Uh, there's one other thing I'd like to go over with, y'all, real, where, Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Parker, before you finish, uh, I'm looking on my phone, I got the same text right now, but I do have a phone where every now and then they say, uh, your phone's been hacked. And I was trained, just like everybody else, not to open up these messages. So my question is, if somebody go to the hospital and got chest pains and thinking they have a heart attack, and they can they get you in there and tell you to sign this, you ain't got time to read all this?
No, sir. That's why, another reason it's called a contract of adhesion, it's a take or leave a contract. And that's why it's
Good, really difficult to make them enforceable, but the issue that you have is people, you would've gone to the hospital, and you're expecting a bill in the mail, and instead, it's coming on your phone, which you are trained, you think those are scams, you ignore. People didn't sit to collections, and I'm
I'm very proud to me, 'cause I'm just died over the man.
Yeah, I mean, I'm the same way, 'cause I went to the hospital and was, and I would've never looked at that text message, begging my
And to me, uh, it's, it's not right. Of course, my mother used to tell me, son, if you think this world is fair, you better go on and leave. But I would, I wish they would go over the, I mean, that young lady, when I said, I'm reading this, and she said, well, let me give you a copy. You know, I, I just, uh, and this marriage, not the only hospital that does it, I mean, it just not. But I would suggest to anyone that's going in for a procedure or anything, to read. When you read what you get when you're going in for surgery, you give away so many of your rights. And about the only way, if they mess up, that you can, that you have an actionable event, is if they leave a pair of forces in there or something.
Oh my God.
You know, it's pretty dramatic. Now, now, if you know it's from merit, and you're pretty sure it's from merit, I think right there in that first text, you can just type stop in the message and hit send. And that tells them, you can't bill me by text anymore for this.
Help me out, Mr. President, help me out on this. Uh, my mama eighty-six, she got a flip phone. She, she don't, you know how this on her phone?
No.
So if she go over there, and they try to do it on her flip phone, that ain't gonna work.
No, it's not. No, it is not.
But she, she don't wanna be in the collection either?
No, she doesn't. And so, uh, I don't have an answer for this yet, supervisor Brad, I just don't have. And I would, I'm going to, next time I go in there, and y'all might try it, you have to go in and say, look, I see number four, collections, I'm signing away my rights. You know, I'm getting a, a text bill, I don't want a text bill, where can I opt out? And I can promise you, the people that you, all of us, see on the front line at hospitals, and doctors' offices, in general, their role is not to analyze the documents they've been trained to give to you to get signed. So I have no idea what their response would be. But this is all kind of, I've been working on this for a few months now, because I didn't want to come anywhere half-cocked, saying something I hadn't seen or didn't know to be true. And again, Merritt has some of the greatest people, some of my best friends, and some great doctors and nurses, but it's these systems that we have to deal with that are so confusing, and billing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And like I say, an employee, I just looked at the bill from him, he overpaid by two of them.
Well, at least, at least we know that now, and everybody that sees this will know that now, they need to check those phones, and then they, it's okay to hit stop and send, uh, on any of those messages, but I get the same thing he's getting all the time. I'm overdue, my phone's just been shut off. I just, I clear all that out all the time, and most everybody else does, too.
But, you know, the other thing is, most of us, we need to understand, when we start getting bills from hospitals or doctors, typically owe them something, it's better to send them something a month and just start going, and then have dialogue. I was talking, uh, to a hospital across the river, and, uh, with the people in their billing department, et cetera. I don't think they do it quite like this. Um, and she was like, you know, Fred, if we know a person's making, some have, by sending us something and communicating with us, it's hard to get in collections. You know, you just have to keep up and send them a little something. If there's no more questions on that, uh, recently, I was in Canada at a insurance convention, uh, looking at some different things. I talked to insurers, and agents, and brokers from all across the United States. And, uh, learned quite a lot. One statistic that stuck out in my mind is that a, an employee with a primary care physician, their healthcare costs are running about twenty-seven percent below that of an employee that does not have a central primary care physician. And by that, I mean, uh, you've got one internal medicine doctor that you see for everything, and from that point, he sends you, oh, you need a cardiologist, you need a this, you need a that. And looking through a lot of claims, et cetera, a lot of our folks do not have a primary care physician. They use a scattershot approach to healthcare, and they might go to this after-hours clinic one day, and that one the next day. And frankly, I've been trying to figure out how to get this across, how to get people to maybe come on board with this, and, uh, I don't have an answer yet, but maybe in a couple of weeks, I'll come up with something and get back with y'all, maybe some incentive, even if I have to provide the incentive. Now, so in looking at, I asked Blue Cross to pull a aggregate report. That report shows all the calls, number of employees, it shows everything about Adams County Group Health Plan. This goes back to April of twenty-twenty, and goes through March of twenty-twenty-five. In that time period, Blue Cross has paid out ten million, nine-hundred-sixty-nine thousand dollars in claims, hospital, doctor, and RX. That's eleven million dollars. In that same time period, Blue Cross has returned almost half a million dollars in RX rebates. So then I looked at, and of course, we're, as supervisors, it's your job to look after the county's money. Uh, I looked at the reinsurance fixed cost. That has stayed within three or four percent for that entire time. I've got this report, which I can give to each of you. And the Blue Cross Blue Shield fixed cost has stayed within one percent. That's for, you know, from April twenty to March twenty, from one to two, from three to four, that's almost six years. Your actual cost for the reinsurance hasn't fluctuated much. What's costing our county are claims, period, end of story. That's where all the expenses come. And, uh, of course, in trying to think about this and how to get it a little better, we can't change the, we can't suddenly flip from a mean or average age of, say, fifty-five to thirty-five, which would do a lot, but, uh, we can try to figure out a way to get people to have the primary care physician, go for their wellness benefit, and do some things that are positive for their health, because the employees need to understand that this is their health plan, and how they use it affects the cost for everyone. But in any rate, that's all I have this morning, and, uh, if there are any questions, I'll be quiet for a second. I know it's hard to get to the wake-up and do that, but, uh... Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna step out of order here and let, uh, Lynette do her, so she can get on to another board meeting.
Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, on that last, I was planning, I have two material invoices under the Adams County Aqua Home Improvement, uh, project. They are in Mr. Wilson's district, Donna Germany, material, four thousand, eight-hundred-fifteen thousand dollars. Ms. Foale Burns, four thousand, nine-hundred-eighty dollars. We do have the funds, and our office is likely to commission to pay the material invoices.
Okay.
Moved by Ms. Hudson, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it.
What about this reservation? Alan's here. Are you gonna do that?
Okay, thank you. Neil Levitt, are you there?
Yes, uh, yeah, clear here.
All right, um, he's our public adjuster. Um, go ahead with your, uh, comment.
Yes. Well, yes, so we had asked the special, Mr. Scott, in regards to the inspection, and we did on the property, uh, roughly two weeks ago.
Yes.
And, uh, we had been back and forth with an email, by asking the board, asking for the questions for us, a little more clarification, and we've left the, the dress back out, we put
Okay, go ahead.
So they came to our property, and they reviewed, I believe, for a disaster incident, and came back saying that there was some damage, and wanted to, by one arm, to have some claims, uh, recovered. I think I brought this to the attention of the last board meeting, and y'all, they'd be here to answer questions you might have regarding the damage and so forth.
Someone calling you.
Okay, go ahead, then.
So, and again, there's specific questions. We had inspected both the, uh, a few county buildings, the old jail, the new jail, um, and the courthouse buildings. We found, uh, modern roof damage, it was essential on one of the buildings. Uh, moderate damage throughout the other exteriors. Um, I mean, you definitely have damage from the, like, the large storms. As a matter of fact, do you wanna move forward with a potential claim, and see if we can get travelers to pay us some money for the damages that have occurred? Um, you do have debris along the policies, or any debris that you have to remove throughout the county. Um, you could turn back in for a recovery, both of the hours spent, and you said contract that hours spent, and equipment usage. Um, I mean, there's any documentation you'd add to your own, uh, and we can submit back to the carrier for the coverage, um, along with the roof damages, the possible, uh, AC problems, uh, window issues. And that's just a few buildings we looked at right in account, the forty-something locations, so, possible offloads. Yeah, also, probably, Paul, if we'd only be submitting one claim, it wouldn't be a bunch of claims. We only get one, there's one claim based off the policy, based off the data loss, uh, it's one claim with multiple locations.
Okay, have y'all already, uh, assessed all the damages?
No, so we did a pre-labor that had walked, and it seemed there was nothing even worth talking about. Because if you don't have damages from a storm, then there's no reason for us to even, you know, imply further or open a claim when you're behind. The damages we saw that were definitely claimable, with, uh, water intrusion, with ceiling damages, you have window damage, roof damage. You have the roof damage alone over the courthouse itself, you know, that's a hundred-plus square roof. And the three fat people that are there look like they're, uh, they're, um, organic shingles from, you know, years ago. And outside of your loss run, just a minimal, uh, payments back in your claim, like, I think it's eighteen and maybe in twenty, and you had a few little, uh, a couple little minimal claims, eight, ten thousand dollars. Outside of those repairs that potentially made, you, you have some sample damages that would be, you know, in my opinion, covered under the policy. And I just think, just on the few buildings we looked at there in town, um, we don't write any estimates or do any, any really, in-depth, uh, claim review until we have a letter of representation, start submitting to the carrier. Um, you know, what we're looking at initially, we're like, if there's preliminary, to see if there was actually damage worth discussing, which we did, we have thought.
Okay, um, y'all want them to follow up on this and, uh, see, see how much damage we have, and will it can be repaired through the, uh, insurance?
I just, uh, probably would say, yeah, but I heard him say that they have a debris removal, uh, that you have, when we had our last, this storm in March, when not, this sandstorm knocked out the lights, I had to, without the equipment at the charity department, and stuff like that, we had the trees down. I was just running, 'cause I see this one claim, just from that claim, right, that you have in it?
I'm thinking he said debris removal, that's gonna be off the structures that, that's, they're gonna make the claim, like, the roofs on these buildings, that's
Is that county wire, or are you talking about just, just the area?
That debris removal covers everything the county owns. So if you had, um, debris in the roads, and you had to use debris removal, whether it's a, an outside company or your own, your own staff, all that money is submittable to the carrier for recovery. Um, debris removal is not just per location, it, it's your, your insurable areas. So your roadways, you have fine coverages, if you had down signs, down, down lights, all those would be claimable. And, um, you know, we would address all that. We would need a letter of representation at this point, with the state minimum or maximum, be it up to ten percent. And then we would go through and write estimates for all the damaged buildings, we did investigate and inspect all the properties, write estimates accordingly, submit those to the carrier, and then revisit all the properties with the carrier and their adjuster for an inspection.
Okay, would that also
We, we'll cover each coverage that you have on your policy, whether it be food spoiled, like your fan, uh, whatever you may have. We'll remove, we'll cover, and we remove from your policy, so.
Okay, that also would cover the damage to the jail from the lightning strikes?
Yes, sir. Yeah, any damage that, that data loss, we'll all be one claim, and we cover every location, every, every coverage, send you a tag out.
Okay, all right, all right. Scott, is okay to make a motion that we, uh, get them on board with this, get them started?
Yeah, I can, y'all wanna approve their contract or skip the work, we'll do that.
They have a letter of representation.
All right, need a motion for a letter of representation, uh, through the
To be signed, you have it, yeah.
And it's called Your Public Adjuster, Inc.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And our letter of representation is from the Department of Insurance, from the city, so, so state regulatory. Our letter of representation is from the Department of Insurance from Mississippi, so state regularly.
Need a motion. So, about Ms. Hudson. About Ms. Hudson, second. Uh, Mr. Gaines, second. Any discussion?
Mr. President. Sound like a crazy question, I'm asking anyway, so we gonna have them to get all the information we need to submit to travelers, for travelers to pay for the damages that we had to our buildings, our roads, or whatever the case may be?
Yes.
Okay, then.
All profits, correct.
Then, my question is, are we gonna pay them and then submit it to travelers?
They get ten percent of what they recover.
What they recover, okay, I got you.
But we'll handle the correspondence with the carrier. We all that, we'll give the carrier all the back and forth of the inspection.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any more discussion?
Yes, I guess maybe I don't question.
You're a lot louder this time.
Okay. Because I was hesitant, but I should make that, but I knew we had to have discussion now. But my thing is, what if they come up with a cost that our deductible is more than the cost that they're trying to recover? What do we do?
We already see your deductible. We already see damages past your deductibles.
That'll be passed out.
That's our part of being property damage experts. We're not gonna attack you if you're gonna be below deductible. We already know you're above deductible.
Okay.
That's why we want to work on it. But there's not covered with law, so we would never leave the court hall.
Let me go ahead.
And not below the cover. We don't recover any money for you. We're not paid. So we wouldn't put you in a position that the counter that a loss below deductible and we submit your invoice. Not at all. These are half of the deductible.
Well, let the motion be pending review of the contract. That's what I wanna make.
Pending review of the contract. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any, any needs? Motion carried. Sir?
Sir, I was thinking, decided I'll review, but just let us know which way you wanna go.
I've got the contract, and I'll review it. I'll send a boilerplate, attend them, but it just depends. But I'll look at it and get, get right back to you. The board's already directed me to do it.
All right, very good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, Ms. Patricia Devine Mohammed.
Good morning, everyone. I have slight cold, so I hope that I might be understanding, and I'm nasal. But I, I'm here today to speak on having a sister relationship between the communities of Pine Mountain and Washington Communities and Timbo, Gini, and Timbuktu, Mali. And I'm simply summarizing the proposal, Mr. Gaines. So our mission is to reconnect the community, the historic communities of Pine Mountain, other parts of Adams County, the Washington Community, and our families that are in Timbo, Gini, and Timbuktu, Mali. These are World Heritage Sites, and we know through the enslavement periods that we were disconnected at families. But we have recently reconnected, and we would like to have a sister relationship. We would like to do this through Sister Cities International Incorporated. Now, why join Sister Cities International Incorporated? Sister Cities International was founded in nineteen fifty-six by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And as a result of being Supreme Allied Commander during World War II, he was able to see that the world needed to come together and be able to communicate and have friendly relationships. Sister City International takes the person who is our highest elected or appointed official in that area. And, and that person is able to then work with Sister City International because they already have toolkits, they already have sister relationships that we can use as best practices. To join Sister City starts at a hundred and ninety dollars, and then for our community, it goes up to, for our population, six hundred dollars. Our objectives are to do three things. One, cultural exchange, which we have already started with the U.S. Embassy in Gini, sending our relatives from Gini to the United States in the last few years. Second, educational exchange, in which the universities there in Gini and in Timbuktu. And if you know, Timbuktu had the largest university in ancient times. And some of those documents from the University of Timbuktu are already being displayed in Mississippi. We've had those being displayed in Jackson, and we want to definitely bring those intellectual properties to Adams County. We also want to have our students and our, and our school system and at the universities that are already interested in doing educational exchanges. And then lastly, we want to do economic development and trade missions, which the U.S. Embassy is facilitating. What we want to do, as, as I said, we've already started these projects, but we want to now make them official. And so, just to summarize and conclude, we want to make sure that our highest elected official in the Washington Communities and Pine Mountain Communities is a part of Sister City International and are able to make some positive relationships based on that. Thank you very much.
Mr.? Thank y'all, go ahead.
So, Mr. Wilson, President Wilson, this is a conversation that started at the Juneteenth celebration, and she was explaining to me what, what it was and what it was going on. And I basically, you know, told her, as a board, and I told her to come back. She sent me a little information. We trying to find out that she was sending the information. And I tell her to come to the board and make sure she present what she had going on to the board, because, you know, I'm acting one supervisor, and so I don't make a vote on anything. I just, I know that some of the families that's, I think it's been in the paper for the last year or some of the families out in my area was Prince, I forgot the name, over at Foxmount. Over at Dr. Smith, over there by Foxmount, he was on, on it, and so they've been working together. So I was just telling her to get some information together, and after presenting, that's why I told her to present it better, because I didn't know how, so I just wanted her to present out, letting you know exactly why it was here, so she can present it. Then I did hear say some other things, so I know if anything from who before, when she said organization, stuff like that, so it would be some stuff if he could, you know, we wanted to partner, it definitely had to be legal stuff that I heard with the folks that you would have to at least let Scott look over whatever before we can do that. But I just wanted to give you an update on how it came about.
Okay.
Mr. President, let me ask a question.
Yes.
Is this similar to what the city did with being involved with the city, city, Sister City deal? Because I thought when I was over there.
With Nashville, the Nashville Trace?
We had something.
Did it do Sister City?
City sister deal in the city. I don't know, I can't remember. I'm just asking a question.
Okay, I'm not sure exactly what that is. But Sister Cities International Incorporated is an organization, as I said, founded by President Eisenhower. But you want to join Sister City International because it allows us to have a positive relationship. They already have toolkits. They've been doing this, as I said, since nineteen fifty-six. And they have toolkits, so they're gonna be expected, cultural exchange, and ability to create citizen diplomats and citizen ambassadors, so that our young people here are able to interpret, the interpreters, when, when people come into town, and tourists come into town. They have also toolkits on the best practices of educational exchange between the university, we know we have in our district, the historic Jefferson College, which we are being working with, and the two Mississippi museums that we're looking to expand a relationship with the Mississippi Department of History and Archives. And most importantly as well, that Sister City International has best practices and those toolkits on how to have a positive education, I mean, economic development and trade missions. In fact, they're gonna do a trade mission next month with Japan. So they'll show us as we try to develop our tourism and our economic relationships. In fact, in Gini, they have the U.S. Embassy is facilitating the U.S. companies that are in Gini and Mali and other parts of West Africa to, so that we can then develop those economic relationships here and develop the consulate, because they are interested in making this also a consulate, a position. That is, that people who would like to do business or visit those areas will then come to the consulate located in Adams County. So Sister Cities International, the importance of joining that is because they already have the ability to do that and the toolkits, and we have best practices. And then our leader, our official county leader, the one who was elected to do that, will be able to work with that group, join that group, be a part of the team. Thank you.
I, I, I understand, and I'm on board with what you're saying. I was just going back and picking back and seeing what's the city involved in saying.
No, no, the city is, in this, in this project, the city is.
Okay, that's the only question.
Yes, okay.
The only thing I did leave out, because, you know, we had the conversation that she vaguely, she hit it, but I wanted to know, what's his name, Michael Mars, with M.D.?
Yes, Mr. Michael Mars.
Yes, with the.
Two Mississippi Museum. He's the director.
Yeah, I know, he, he sent us out a thing that we, we adopt the houses, I, I don't know.
Historic.
The old, so, and he's still Jefferson College over there. Michael Mars, he's been here at the historic, I think he's out of Jackson. And so the Mississippi Historic Department is, is, is not just a one effort. It's trying to be a team effort, so, but I just needed the information.
Right.
So we can look at.
Yes, as you know, that the Prince Abdulrahman Ibrahim Al Sari and others were enslaved in that area. They were all from, from the Gini, Mali, Timbuktu area. And so, and, and what they're already doing, since Mr. Mars is very, he's very much interested in doing it. And, and so, when the family was here a couple months ago, was trying to build that, make that, make that relationship, because we wanted a cultural exchange to take our cultural artifacts to Gini and to Timbuktu. And as I said, the artifacts from the University of Timbuktu are already being displayed in Jackson, but not in Adams County, where, where we actually have families and relationship. So with you being a part of Sister City International, it allows us in Adams County to do, to be a part of the best practices. What they're doing, we'll learn how to do that and be able to impact our tourism.
Looking at the information.
Yeah, and it's six, and for our, our county, as I said, it starts at one hundred and ninety, but for the base of population, so for our county, it will be six hundred. But what you'll be able to do then, as I mentioned, sir, is the ability to, we have other relationships that we want to cultivate as well. And maybe the city can then also, you know, participate in what we want to do.
And I think what we'll do, I'll let that, I, you know, so we vaguely, I'm glad you came in and just kind of explained to them, but definitely what you, what you're doing, we'll definitely need to put up, like, what you said, the contracts, I mean, the different stuff like that, it has to even, you know, attorney had to definitely look at all that, you know, before we can even make an answer. So I just, glad, you know, I did make sure that it told you I wanted you to have the opportunity to present it to the whole board, because I didn't have the information like you do, and I cannot present, present it right, but I appreciate you coming, and we'll, I'm gonna give it back to the president.
Okay.
That's, that we'll definitely need, you just give them information. You know, we'll get it to the attorney. He had to look over.
Have you been over there?
To the attorney?
No. Dakar or?
Oh, yes, sir. I.
I was there recently.
Well, oh, in Dakar, you were in Dakar, okay, yes, sir.
Thank God, yeah.
Oh, okay, great, and I, as a child, annoying and being from that area, and then also worked with college, with Mississippi Department of History and Archives. I was very inspired to go there, and that was in the eighties, just from being in high school and all, to take that and also have worked in Africa. So I'm very familiar with the process, familiar with what the State Department does. Thankful that the U.S. Embassy and the cultural exchange has been the one who's actually paying and sending them here. But we have to reciprocate, you know, they're reaching out with the relationship. And we have the, and, and now our ambassador, Fidrel, who was the U.S. Ambassador for Gini, who actually sent them here, he now has the State Department Africa Division for the entire continent. So they're reaching out to us, we're just lacking, and as I said to you, sir, that the best thing to do is, when you work with Sister City International, they have, they have already the toolkits and the best practices to do it. So it's not just like, maybe, I don't know what the city is doing or whatever, but some people just say, okay, I want to do a Sister City. Okay, but it doesn't really become to, to be a positive relationship if you don't, okay? And you're saying like Dakar, you know, Dakar is beautiful, Dakar is our cultural, it's a cultural center. And, and also they have Pan-African festivals, and they want to be able to bring those festivals here as well. So as well as, you know, with the United Nations, we go hand and lead to the United Nations and work with that. So we have a lot of that, but we want to make sure whatever we do, we have the best practices, so that we have positive relationships, effective relationships. We want to have our students go there. The museum already wants to do it, but we also want to have the economic development that is there and all the American companies that want to make some of those Sister City relationships to develop Adams County economics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any city government business?
Oh, okay.
City government business? Departmental reports?
Good morning, board. I'm Patricia Riley from the Sanitation Department. I just want to come in and my monthly report this morning, let you guys know, for the month of July, we billed out five thousand eight hundred and fifty-three active accounts. We have about four hundred and twenty-nine people on draft. The rest of them are on where they pay via credit card, I mean, online, in person, or they're paying. We have recently, we ran a little trial. We had Taylor come in from I am Business Solutions and set our computers up so we can take payments via phone. We just, we did it on a trial basis, just to see how it's gonna work, because all the students, she refused to do it. So we tried to incorporate recently, and it's successful, it's not overwhelming like we thought it would be. So we are officially opening it up where they can finally make their payments via phone, and it still does the same thing, but working hand in hand with our tax collector office. Their accounts are updated right away, and they can still go across the street with their tags without being held up, coming to see us first. They can take their, they can take care of their via phone, and then go across the street to the tax collector office. However, it does charge a two-point-three-five percent fee if you use a debit card or credit card. So we want to let them know that also, because some of them have to probably pay an extra money. But it's not, and they want to say, well, the county is trying to squeeze you to pay. And I have to explain to them that it's not the county that's giving the money. It's the people that set the credit card systems for us that actually, because that's how they keep paying. But our trucks are still running three routes, as they always have done. We didn't have any complaints last, no, we just had a lot of calls trying to figure out whether they were gonna work on the Fourth of July, which they did. So if somebody got, if they did call us in to complain. So if somebody got, if they did call us in to complain, uh, of course, we were offered for it. But we explained to them, you know, that they were gonna be still on the route, just let you know, they trashed out there.
Were they running a day behind? Cause I had several people call, say that trash didn't get picked up on the correct day and.
One day, the day we had the bad storm in Eaton time, when it hit about three thirty or four o'clock, they came off the roads.
Okay.
Uh, and they picked that up immediately the next morning. So they, they ran it, where they cut off that day, they picked up the following morning.
Do you know what's going on with the, uh, the two disposal sites, Kingston and Foster Mound?
Steve, uh, Foster Mound's steam plant road was full, so they closed it until they came, until they get a chance to come and dump.
Yeah, they called me, we closed three or four days last week, it was closed Saturday, and they was throwing, I think Brad said they throwing it over on Seal Road. People stole it out because they get mad because they ain't got a way to dump it. And I had several calls myself saying that the grains and Fenwick area weren't getting picked up. I called Paul myself though, just to call him, and he said that they were picking them up. So, but, uh, me and him did discuss the Phoenix station, they did get our boxes this morning. They started it before seven, getting boxes this morning at Foster Mound.
So you had a lot of extra littering in the county because the Foster Mound was closed? Cause y'all couldn't pick, they couldn't pick up the dumps, or I keep saying, y'all, y'all don't, you don't work for United Infrastructure.
Well, whenever they, whenever they call and let us know that they are full, if he calls or maybe somebody calls and tells them they're full. We got, we get a contract with United Infrastructure ASAP, like, uh, somebody needs to get out there and dump it. Because if they don't dump it, uh, the next alternative to be, uh, customer either go all the way to Keystone or use a Triad disposal. We can deal with it.
And what they do is just throw it on the side of the road. I don't know if they don't know they can go to Triad disposal and just put their, all they gotta do is write their name and address down and, and, uh, the county pays for it.
I, that's what I was gonna say, they have the option because I see it on the building, so.
Are they open on Saturday, Robby?
Yes.
Now they open at six o'clock in the morning, close at four o'clock. People need to know they can go to Triad on, at all eighty-four and, uh, dump it if Foster Mound is closed. Okay.
Part of the contract, if, if they're notified that those dump sites are full, how much time do they have to dump those?
Well, they sure are busy. A day, you know, I'm sure. I don't know about that.
Certainly not three or four days.
That's something that's gotta be picked up though. We don't need to be fighting all that extra garbage on the side of the road. And that's exactly what people do, they're mad or inconvenient because they went there and it was closed, and they just go to the nearest spot they can find that isn't, nobody's driving by, and they throw it out on the side of the road. All right, do you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
See, Scott's still looking that up. Uh, who's next?
Good morning, Adam's County, E now. I just want to give you the number of calls for the month of June. Adams S O A five sixty-six, National P D eight nine sixty-six, National Fire Department thirty-three. That's about a whole month of June, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I miss y'all.
Hey, been a while.
Yeah. I'm here to present the, uh, recap from twenty twenty-five road. Uh, I have the affidavit for the personal property row and affidavit for the real. We're on time, uh, and it looks like we're up and says banked by about forty-four weeks. And that's all I have.
Wow, short and sweet.
Yep.
You need a motion for?
Yep. Took.
For the recap?
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins? Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
Good morning. This is my person speaking. I'm here to ask for travel for myself and Payroll who went to conferencing, Jackson, Florida. It was a conference that I went to last year. And, um, I'm asking for payroll because she and I work hand in hand together. So I'm asking for travel for that. And then dates are obviously, that is moved the thirteen.
What names are on, oh, she's got a paper, okay.
So, Sharon Jefferson and.
Exactly.
Okay.
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good morning, Joe Bellin, the chairman of the Department of Drug Recovery. And this is Cassandra Woods with, uh, United Treasury Court. We have submitted, uh, travel for five people to State, uh, Association Drug Recovery Technical Conference. It's down in the box from August the twelfth through the fifteenth. That's for myself, uh, one of the assistant attorneys, uh, Patrick Lewis, Duchess Prater, our case manager and coordinator.
To where?
Blessings, uh, being noted, I need to see.
That's, that's reimbursement to the right?
Yes.
So.
All right, moved by Ms. Hutchins?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Okay, you have, I'm gonna make sure, Cassandra Woods, Duchess Prater.
Yes.
Diwan Lewis?
Yes.
Joe Bellin?
Yes.
And Christina Daughtry?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
No.
Any names, motion carries?
The second thing that we presented this morning was the, um, one, one report says accountability and recovery at the top. Uh, gave from the supervisor and Miss Benson, uh, share this amount of money that's been spent per month from July of last year up until, or, yeah, July first of last year up until June thirtieth of this year for the AOC grant. The total so far that was spent was, uh, one eighty-seven, nine twenty-two, point eight five. And we're just waiting on the July reimbursement to, uh, come through that's been submitted.
All right, that first one is accountability.
The accountability, it should say accountability and recovery at the top.
Okay.
That's the AOC money.
Okay.
And then the second one was, um, it just says M S P H I at the top, from nine one of twenty-four, eighty-three, one of twenty-five. And to this point, we spent fifty thousand, six seventy-one, fifty-two, up to sixty-six thousand, that was worth a quarter.
All right.
We're still waiting on, uh, you.
And you just want to expat across the minutes?
Yeah, just letting y'all.
Oh, do they, they can expat across the minutes? All right.
And I also, um, provided you all the reports for the heart, and all the, the United Treasury Court COVID restoration. All right. Um, and I provided you with the date that we requested, the amount that we requested it, and when we received it. Um, I currently don't have the receipt for June as I am working on that report currently. For July, I'm sorry, as I'm working on that report currently.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
You go next. We don't have time for that.
It would take a long.
You were up.
It would take a long.
Oh, Lord.
Good morning, what are y'all doing? An answer to Supervisor Milton's question, six. It was six of them, out of that event. Uh, nine one one volume three hundred and sixty-five requests, three D nine one one proper. Uh, two hundred and sixty-nine of those were transported for a seventy-four percent transport rate. City eight minutes and twenty-three seconds at ninety-three percent, and in the county, fourteen minutes flat with ninety-four percent. Uh, we had thirty-nine refusals, uh, where we actually arrived, made contact with patients, they refused to go. Seven no patient contacts, those are down, and then thirteen canceled, also down. Twenty site calls, which dropped significantly from the May numbers. Uh, I'm gonna blame it on the afternoon showers that we get, it kind of cooled the temps off and kind of cooled attitudes along with it. Uh, wanna once again, I thank National P D and Adams County S O, they, they are in set with us on those scenes. They make sure that they're clean and they're clear before we step in into them. And that, that is a very, very good thing that they've been doing, of course, with that. A hundred and seventy-one multiple calls at the same timeline, and then two flights from the field. And if y'all remember, we had twenty last month, so the weather's kind of impacted what we could, couldn't put on flight. And we've actually had some that had to go from the scene straight by ground, straight to Jackson, uh, as a result of the flights not being able to reach. So, uh, total EMS requests is nine one one and nine nine one, nine hundred and fifty-six for the month. And like I pointed out, the patient refusals and no patient founds decreased, the flights decreased. And then we, we just wanted to give you an update, we continue the monthly meetings with the hospitals. Those are very productive meetings, uh, everything's good there, we're moving forward, moving along and working on joint plans and, and, and processes. So all that's going really smooth. Uh, just to let y'all know, incident command trailer during one of those wind events, a tree fell off the neighboring property and destroyed our incident command trailer, and that's typically what every agency here has used for incident command situations. I am working to get that pushed to our insurance and either get it replaced or get it repaired. Uh, but there will be a, a result of that is, I've, I've already spoke to the Department of Health. They do have an available resource that's housed in Brookhaven, so if we've got something that's gonna be long and extended that would, uh, be a request, I will quickly, Brad, they can reach out to, he reached out to Department of Health, and that man will get the trailer over for us. So we do have a plan in the meantime, uh, while I'm still trying to mitigate that and get it corrected.
Okay.
All right, my question for my. Appreciate you.
This is Big Brown, fabulous, I'm gonna let you up.
Oh, man.
I keep the cheese. Good morning, what are y'all doing?
How are you?
I got a couple of things this morning, uh, pretty much all y'all know the last, before I went to the city army to ask about, uh, participating or helping out with the science project. They did say they were gonna take it under advisement, uh, for the thirteen thousand on that. So we just waiting to hear back from them, uh, on that.
Okay, uh, did, have you, you talked a little on that about, uh, possible grant?
Well, the, the grant is for new sirens. Uh, you know, pretty much that would benefit the city because the city have the folk owned sirens. The county will here to put up new sirens, uh, back then, uh, to more up to day ones. Uh, but the project, it can only be used for new sirens. But the one we're doing now, we have up to day sirens, we're just updating our software to be activated on that. So, but I did talk to her, so she did send that to the city on that, so if they want to get new sirens, they can do the grant on that for that. I want to, I think, uh, let's see, the guy was, we were still a little field, I mean, I guess he was trying to order the barks or something.
Yeah, I thought that actually in my house to ask for.
Okay. Uh, next, we got travel, uh, for the month of July, some of my staff. Our request to travel, these are, these are not overnight staff, I mean, overnight trips, uh, these just turned on, so we don't need to cut out any.
Oh, okay.
Uh, July night, uh, fire safety summit at the Mississippi Fire Academy, Pearl, uh, myself, Robert Bradford, Billy Humphries and Mike Ellis. Uh, fifteenth through seventeenth, uh, I got attended by McDema Board Planning Workshop at the Civil Slipper in Bay St. Louis, uh, McDema Association is covering all my trips. On the seventeenth, we got our R I P C meeting in Brooks County, uh, that'll be for Greco's, Billy Humphries and Tom McGee. On the twenty-second, uh, we got Hang Community College, Big Society, Frank Fagan Top. Uh, myself, Robert Bradford and Billy Humphries would be attending. And on the twenty-third, uh, we have Madison County L A P C workshop in Madison County. Uh, myself, Robert Bradford and Tom McGee would be attending.
All right. Think I got any questions for Mr. Brack?
I got, I got one question. Before inside the city. You say that you totally net to send the information to the city?
Mm-hmm.
I guess it's a crazy question to ask, then, then, then if, if that's the case, what is the problem for them paying for the, the update the ones that are in the city now?
That's all the question to run, I have authority with.
I'm just saying.
When they threw their little hissy ditty over there, because it, it was bad, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm.
Uh, but, uh, they didn't, they didn't know there was a grant available that they could totally replace those sirens. And I didn't know, he just told me that we, they weren't, they were gonna be total replacements and it, it wouldn't benefit us at all because I had asked Lynette about it. I said, are there any grants for those sirens? And she said there was a grant, but I didn't know the information that he just told us. Oh, so now they know, go ahead.
I'm gonna say this. I guess I've been on this board longer than anybody, and I, I've been on the city board and I'm on the county board. Uh, I, I, I just thought we was beyond going backwards and saying what the county having done and what the city having done. I thought from, from, from what I'm hearing from the mayor, how the city and the county has worked together better than they ever worked before. But then other people in the city saying something totally different from what he's saying. Me personally, I thought we was working real good together. And I thought we was, what, at the end of the day, you, you, you got to start from where you are right now and move forward. You, you, you never gonna have success when you continue to go reach back and say what somebody else having done and keep bringing that kind of stuff to the table. In order to make this community where all of us wanted, we, we just need to start where we are and move forward instead of trying to go backwards and say what somebody ain't done. I, I could, I've been on both boards and, and, and both boards at fault. But I wish we just start where we are right now and just move forward. Because some of that stuff I read about Martin Town Road, I guess they not aware that that's the city road all the way till you get to Oakland, it's not the county road. So I wish we could find a way to, uh, get on the same page and, and, Mr. President. And I, I know, uh, it, it, it's easier for you to represent us over there and the mayor represent them over there, and if we have some kind of disagreement, you bring it back to us and he bring it back to them. And we just move forward, man, I'm, I'm, I'm sick of that. We got too many safety issues in this community. Be spending over fifteen thousand dollars, really just don't make sense. Cause I'm just gonna say this, Sheriff, cause it on my mind, but I wasn't even here this weekend, but, but what, what, what I, somebody sent me a text of the killing and Holiday apartment and the shooting from Manor Street to Woodlawn Street to Prince Street. I ain't never heard nothing like that before in my life in this community. So if we work together and get like New Orleans, get the cameras that we need in the areas that we needed in, then maybe we can solve some of these tough problems that we have when people just outright just shooting like they on TV or something. It, 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 I'm just gonna say this and I'm gonna be quiet. We just need to make our community safe by any means necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
And once again, I'm sorry that they acted like that, and, and we don't know what, what happened at the board or what monies they got hit with before you got in there, so I'm just like, I, I, I can't, I can't say what happened, but it, yeah, I didn't like the way you were treated, I'm sorry.
I'm good, that was our paper. But, uh.
We do need a motion. Okay, we gotta get a motion on your travel, even though you said, you said it was all turn of burn?
Well, I got, oh, turn of burn, I got one, I'm saying.
Oh, you got another one?
Yeah, this is different one.
Okay, go ahead and bring that one too.
You do a lot of gathering.
Uh, yeah, I want to request travel for September the third to the fifth, uh, for Miss Billy Humphries and Miss Greco. They are attending ESAP conference at the Luxon Mississippi, uh.
And you have, that's the paperwork, okay.
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins? Moved by Ms. Hutchins?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Thanks. All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
Okay, transitioning to the, uh, volunteer side. Uh, they have a rift half rent that's out now. And I did speak to the gentleman that's over there. And he said we will definitely qualify this time for that rift half rent. Uh, the rural rock, rural fire, fire truck acquisition system program. Uh, we, we can, it's an eighty-twenty grant and we are allowed up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, with that being said, I do know our rebate money's coming in in September. We supposed to get an increase on that. I don't know how much it is now. Uh, but I will, excuse, I want to ask the board if we could commit to that fifty thousand dollars if we get a new truck, uh, for the county to, uh, be able to start, you know, rebuilding the voluntary program for his new vehicle.
So, you said it was an eighty-twenty?
It's eighty-twenty.
Okay, so... So, we'll end up with, uh, ten thousand or so?
No, no, what I'm saying, we only pay twenty percent. We can hook to fifty thousand.
Okay, okay, so you don't...
Twenty thousand, five hundred dollars probably. Yeah, we only pay twenty percent of that if we get a new vehicle. So, I just like, if we can get the board to commit to that, I can go and start getting the incoaches and stuff that we need. Something like I said, we don't refuse. If we cross with money now, uh, I can go and tell them that we're not gonna participate. And I would, they, they wait no need.
Move, okay. All right. Moved by Ms. Hutchins?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried?
That's all I have, any questions on the board?
Thank you, Mr. Brad.
Thanks.
Come on, whoever's next.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're gonna start off by giving a note of the deposit, everything that we made to open on the deposit in a total of twenty thousand, two hundred and eight, two, two dollars and eighteen cents. And that's since May the twenty-eighth.
Thousand, two hundred and eighteen cents?
Twenty thousand, two hundred and eight.
Two dollars and eighteen cents.
Um, so far anything good, no problems. Um, we had our programs, our swimming list and everything's been great. Um, we have some swimming session training for our new bike bars. Or when, you know, they started swimming lessons for the kids and all. We did have people in the road at first, but everything is fine now. So, cause the one John's, they trying them, also some swimming lessons they need, so. So, far anything good. Um, I also wanted to request a reimbursement for the bike bars that got re-certified this year with us. And we have three bike bars that got re-certified. That'll be Mallory, Ford, Elizabeth Gate and my brother McDame.
Okay, what we need to do with that, spread across managers?
Reimbursement for travel to four or...
No, train.
Just a train.
And for...
They pay for the home train?
Yes.
They, they pay for the initial and then the research. They usually give reimbursement research.
Yeah, according to minutes and find it as a cost of...
Formulation.
Of their business fee or, or for, for the county.
Okay, I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, motion carried?
That was really, we just have one open invoice from this is the sheriff's department, but I think they presented this today to be approved for the cadics. And we have ten copies coming, um, actually Tuesday to start this one listing with the fifteen children. So, um, they, we did do their invoice, so, um, she says she'll be dead handled. Soon as they come tomorrow, she'll make sure their paperwork is done.
Are y'all still do, doing the, uh, swimming, uh, deal with the seniors?
Oh, yes.
And how they are, is the water warmed up?
It's naturally warmed down because it's so hot outside, so they're still doing these things.
But the seniors are the seniors, so.
Thank you.
Let me say this, excuse me, let me, let me say this about them. Uh, I just wanna commend you all for the job that you all are doing over there. I was over there for two weeks with my grandkids, thanks for that. And, and they really...
Were you there too, enjoying it?
No, and I need to, I, I'm the one needing to be in there.
You were right there.
Right there, you need to be, then take it. But they, they really doing a great job. And I have to say, their, their instructors, the swimming, um, instructors are really good. And they're, they have really good patience with the kids. In two weeks, my grandbabies are swimming.
For real?
They are swimming for two weeks. And I, I'm just amazed and surprised. They, they felt jumping, they even diving off the diving board.
You were right there, Angela.
They're diving off the diving board, they were afraid and I, I'm just amazed. They got some really good swimming.
That's great, 'cause it's important people know how to swim.
And all our lessons are booked, they been booked for about two weeks now. We had a few people a little like angry, so we might get a little backlash from it, but we did, they, they were, they were on paper, they were online, all of it was displayed, but we just, we just overbooked.
Thank y'all. Keep it up.
We're supposed to give a budget year to the city for...
Hey, do y'all have a budget for, for the year so far or is that, or is that what you're looking for?
We did need to come about the pool chairs, because they told us that they been there for like ten years since they're opening in like here. They're breaking pressure because of, you know, the sun and the wear and tear.
Thanks, Rob.
But we did price them and they are really, really pricey. Like, we went on different like Amazon, we did eBay, we did Savannah, we did the pool website and they are expensive, the chairs that they lay out on. But we started with like so many, now we're down to like, I would say like thirty-two.
You talking about the chairs?
The chairs.
Yeah, because I did not spoke to her about that over there, because they really, and I don't know.
They say they been there since the pool been opened.
We, we, we... Dirty chairs and they get, it's, it's some way they can, I don't know if they need to be cleaned or how, how we...
We cleaned them, like, we pressure washed like twelve miles of car rides, but they been there for thirteen years right now.
Yeah, they in bad shape.
Okay, we were asking about budget, you know?
Annual budget, just supposed to get both the city and the county for approval each year.
What is that due?
Typically on July first.
Okay, do you, do you report where that? Okay.
And maybe there's something you can add in there.
Yeah, that's what I want to see.
My face.
Your face.
Those things.
They'll definitely be the same though.
But it needs to be approved by the city and the county. So, they will need to take the budget probably before the next...
I think, I think she's gonna help on whether it...
I'm sure she will, but it needs to be taken and make sure the city approves it.
Okay, well, we'll go set up our meeting for them, so.
I think we just need to see if they want it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll start with a change order for our home project in the City Home Corporation. Y'all actually approved the change order last time in the amount of ninety-five hundred. And this is from Miss Lucille Smith's house. They, uh, went back and found some issues. He corrected some plumbing issues, which resulted in uncovering additional plumbing issues. But anyway, the, uh, home inspector and the contractor got together and anyway, it's been reduced to sixty-five hundred. So, the change order is now sixty-five hundred for all the same stuff. Uh, unseen plumbing issues, water lines, septic tank lines, stuff like that.
So, you're basing it down from ninety-five hundred to sixty-five?
That's correct.
Well, that's, that's never happened. I'm impressed. All right, so we need a, a motion for that to change the...
So, move it.
Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
And all the home grant, uh, uh, the contractor is gonna get his check finally. The City Home Corporation finally submitted, uh, the money to the, the last two homes. So, now, once he gets that today, he can order the home from his barber smith. I'm talking to you, Angela.
Cause I've been waiting on that, it's been what, three years?
It has been a while, so anyway. So, that's, she's the final person to get a home and he can order that hopefully this week. And we'll get that, get, hopefully get this closed out in the next month or so. All right, so the second issue I have, not issue, but second, um, thing I've got here is this old dip grant for Jones Lumber. Uh, they finally met their jobs numbers. Uh, they held it for a year, so we can close this project down. I've got the closeout package for this for Kevin to sign off on. And I can submit this and get this finally off our, off our books.
Okay, need a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Uh, any discussion?
I, I got a question. When you say they held it for a year, so they just required to hold a certain number for a year and after the years, then whatever?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
This is just with NBA's, you know, the grant.
Yeah. This was like a two thousand eighteen grant. It just took, you know, COVID happened and just took them a while to finally get to the number of jobs that were required.
Was that the same paperwork that they actually mailed over to Kevin that was talking about?
Yeah, I think I brought it up. Is that what I brought up to you that day, man?
The, the...
Uh, no, I've got some additional paperwork, actually.
But what, they mailed to him? It was in the same, it was the extension?
That was the extension, I'm sorry, that was the extension of the home grant, I believe, right?
I don't know, I thought it was closeout stuff. But I was like, I told him to make sure that he needed to breathe it, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Does it need to be signed as well?
Yes, that extension.
It's already signed, we mailed it back and I kept a copy and I think...
Oh, that's right, you did, sorry.
And, and...
I got a copy too.
Cardette was gonna send you a copy.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's...
That's all I've got. Actually, I take that back. Lynette had, uh, mentioned the RA has some, uh, additional disaster funds. And I think she sent y'all a resolution.
This, this rec dealt to regional authority?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
If y'all have projects in mind, this is infrastructure, any kind of infrastructure projects. Uh, I think it's like nine million they received for the entire Delta Regional region. Uh, but anyway, y'all, there, there's nothing you really have to pass today, if you want to, you can.
You have a resolution?
Yes. What's that?
It's a resolution, we might have asked that.
So, a resolution just to say, you know, we're seeing a grant, if you have a project in mind.
What would qualify for that?
What's that?
What would qualify for that?
Basic infrastructure. I mean, of course, you guys don't have a lot of water and sewer, because y'all aren't in that business, but...
Thing about the, uh, bathroom. Bathroom is involved.
Yeah, I can find out, I'm not sure.
Well, we can, we can prove it, then we, then we can find it. We can find a project for it, right?
Bathrooms are not recreational. They're unnecessary.
I'm with you. It's not a recreational facility, but...
Uh, move a motion too.
All right.
We have to talk about that.
Regional authority. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
All right, thank y'all.
I think this is the thing, I have somewhere to go today.
With Alan, we had wars with the NHS building last time. We did get written dibs back. I did give him a copy of those. Those invoices, because in the past with the NHS building, we've been able to get grants for certain. I think we got a grant for the group. Some, see if there's any grants out there for the NHS building, if y'all remember the floor?
Yeah.
Some should come back to us.
Yeah, sure.
This is just under seventy-five grand, it was.
Robbie, you can start your...
I'm sorry.
Okay. First thing I have to want, boys, first thing I have, I have a three hundred and fifty-five million off the lane.
I will be on phone.
Eighten off the lane on that EWP. They have contracts, we have a bit of that truth off that. Um, and I have just said these repairs were completed last week. Some, uh, pictures that you had taken, he's gonna send this inspector out today to, uh, review that and make sure, uh... All right, correct. Next thing I have is, uh, travel. We have our, uh, Governmenters Association, uh, board meeting this Sunday. They were running county there, just the board members to discuss what we have coming up next year. July sixteenth, this is coming there back, so it won't be, uh, for me and Dave.
So...
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, motion carried?
Yes, we have a, uh, wheel loader and backup coming off, going off, uh, nine twenty-nine, uh, going off ten-one. I would ask the board to give me permission to advertise, replace some of the down by back.
So...
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. Uh, all, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, motion carried?
First, listen, boy, you have a request of payment for, uh, waste tire for one thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Reimbursement.
Okay. And you've got another one for, for the, I saw another. Okay. Uh, it's the Department of Environment Quality, one thousand, one hundred and one dollars.
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried?
Next thing I have, uh, Watkins Church Cemetery, there's a old decent request for a load of dirt. Uh, I did that every so often, I just might pull it forward. So, that should have that.
I got it. Uh, okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, motion carried?
What are you doing on that one?
Sorry?
What are you doing on that?
Dirt for secrets cemetery.
Watkins Church Cemetery.
You doing the road to it or...
Say it again?
Are you doing the road to it?
That's everything.
No, I just need to load the dirt, we got some cash.
Oh, it's forever, so what's...
Yeah, it's got some cash and showing, you know. Yeah, what I'm saying, they put in some holes, they have washing and rolling around there.
Prickled, yeah.
Next thing I have, uh, Mason Allen. Um, his last name was July the third, uh, took another position. Uh, so, um, I'd like to take the resignation and ask the board to advertise or, or his position.
Who would say?
Mason Allen.
Allen, he was a shop owner, he was working gas.
Oh, who?
Second.
All right, we're, we're gonna accept his resignation.
And authorize that.
Uh, uh, and authorize, advertise.
Do you got a letter?
Yeah.
Yes, he got it. He learned his exit and all, we know all of that.
Motion by, Mr. Gaines. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, motion carried?
Uh, this is my name, uh, the fire hydrant on, uh, North Calistin.
Four.
Fire hydrant, North Calistin, uh, coming in location right around the area of, um...
Uh, Hosted?
Hosted.
Hosted, yeah.
Right there, there's a six-inch line.
Okay.
Tap to one real fire hydrant. You know, we were a while back, we discussed it, it's been a while back, about the two and a half minutes and three inches line there on Gayler and Liberty Road.
Yeah.
Told me to go ahead, uh, have talked to Herman with Adam County Board, so, uh, he wants me to sit down with Ken Harry, because it was something that they didn't, you know, want to do. So, I will sit down with Ken this week and be back before the board, before we get those hydrants in. So, it's a two and a half, I don't know if it's a, I mean, I'm throwing, I don't recommend anything below the...
Okay.
So, I will have that, I'll meet him this week, uh, Mr. Harry, and I'll get, uh, back with the board and we're trying to go and get all the ready to prepare at the same time.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask you about that, appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay.
I'll drive it.
Again, I do have another few she just sent me, just sent it towards, uh, uh. It's, uh, for six hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. You got that one up there?
I don't, we didn't have that one, did we?
She said she just sent it in, I guess she just got it.
She did?
I was just brought to it. I got another, uh, environmental quality for six hundred and seventy, seventy. I need to spread for awesome minutes. Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Or anything else?
No, it's kind of like all of, uh, I spoke about, I messed on a few things, but I think you can address the board with that, uh, the things I asked him. That's all I have, which y'all have, so I got to tie on that.
True.
Yeah. Other than that.
Mr. President. Did we, uh, ever scat about the, um, court date for what they had postponed about the illegal dumping?
We, uh, we went to court and, uh, me and Mr. Slower showed up like, um, tenth, I think it was, or, no, it was after we done the tenth. We went and they had served the guy, they were gonna serve him, and we, uh, reached out to court.
So I asked, had to ask her set up, she was out that day.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Dollar, I just, um, oh, oh, I know, the project that we've been straining off, I guess about three years or so, uh, Old Bridge. You remember one time it was approved, and I know the last two project. Uh, yeah.
Maybe.
No.
You know, yes. That's all, that was about Old Bridge, E W P on Old Bridge, that was approved on the books for two to three years, went in there, made A S was here, checking on the project. Then we changed five hundred of the road and redo all that.
Has like, they ever tried on eighteen blocks?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, no.
That's what I say, this is what I talked to him about, he won't even point it up to me, every six sides and Robin's like, uh, off Mount Bridge, we need to bring that up here.
Okay, alright, alright, thanks.
Mr. Dollar. About the guy that I had to call you about, the, uh, paving up the road, you know, you told me it was gonna be done?
Yes, uh.
Have y'all set up enough?
I have not. I spoke with the M B, come through the state of Mississippi, you know, coming down through the city, being in Mississippi about a month and a half, uh, to do it. I did do some research on my own, I did call him, and it's, uh, sort of like what we did, uh, on muddy oak road and on Gaylord Road. For mixing material and, uh, things like that, they do a turnkey, they don't want, you know, the county to do anything, they want to come in and do the job when they do. But we need to meet with him and let him, uh, move his product and speak with us, and I will, I will chat.
Yeah, you set up, uh, a date, and if I'm not here, you probably just gonna have to go and meet with him, because I'm gonna be gone next week, this week, that's this week.
I'll reach out to him and set something up.
And one more thing.
Yes.
Prince Edition. Have you rode down the lake? A tree fell back toward the back. And definitely, the root part is looking like it's bigger than this building, and at the end of the road, they are still dumping that now.
Heard about it, by the abandoned house?
Yes, sir. They got so much, they got so much.
Okay, I'll, I'll put something there for you.
Alright.
And then, okay.
Hey, uh, Mr. Dollar, one more thing, I had a call where I looked the Broadmoor. Going down here, about the no dumping sign, no litter sign, but there is a no lit, one no litter sign there, but it's just dirty, you can't see it. Can, is it possible that we can get that side clean and, uh, maybe post a one to the own, come, to the own coming traffic coming out of Broadmoor? So we can have one on both sides, could we possibly put a no, no litter sign so the ones coming out can see it, and going in, and get that one clean? It's just mildew from the tree.
Where are you telling, why there's a sign sitting right there beside it?
I already know.
But I'm gonna take care, I'll try to take care of it while I'm there.
So, you, you know, I, I, I kind of, you know, I, I do explain it, and, uh, actually, I was on the phone before I got here this morning, talking about that. And I, you know, we can only do so much as supervisors, and we can put more no littering signs up there, and sometime, after you post no litter signs, I almost like just tell the people, go litter. But I just wanna.
Yeah.
Try to feel some respect of the people that I said. Alright.
One more thing, please, Kevin.
Yes.
One more thing, Robbie. Have you all got a list back on soil and water conservation on their last E W P projects that you all submitted?
Alright, you know, I talked, you know, the two you, you concerned in on, uh, Sandy Creek and.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, it was the church on Sandy Creek, you know, Sandy Creek, church on F G. Uh, they said that money had been released, but I hadn't heard anything from Norman about that, and Norman's been off two weeks.
Okay.
So we should hear something on that money too, but he said it had been released.
Okay.
Uh, the last one we submitted, I can check it out, if they responded back on the one we submitted, if they approved it, yeah, but I can, I'll take.
Okay, great.
Mr. President. I sent a notice over to Grapton Heights, twelve Grapton Heights, asking them to contact me about the.
Yes.
Overflow of, of the sewer, and if they do not contact us back by next meeting, we can think about how we wanna address or go forward on it. What do you wanna go forward on it, on this property, whether you and I may take a ride out there in your district, and they wanna take a ride and just not ask to talk to the neighbor about it. We need to think about, if she gets in contact, is what we, what we need to do. So I think we've done E W P on that project too.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, P, well, why, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. President, I'm glad you brought that up about sewage. Uh, if, if a person got a septic tank and, uh, it's just running all in the backyard and all that, do, do, do we have to let it do the health department?
That's what I was gonna say, I contacted the health department. I have an issue right now with their help, I believe.
Well, you contact the health department, okay. Maybe I need. Because I told the citizen.
Nobody here on the local level here, now all of a sudden it worked out of Jackson and Duke, because of, uh, Mr. McCann, and I'm gonna just say, he was in this area here. I think you have Kyle Jackson down here, he's the empty gear, uh, and I think you have to reach out and have Jackson.
He got a ball rolling.
Yeah, that's what I say, I used to reach out to.
And this was somebody that was just dumping it in the ditch and let it run down towards the neighbor.
Correct.
I know she cares about her lot, because she does a good job of, you know, taking care of her front.
She does, she keeps cutting all of one of your combines, so I think she would do something, I think she was gonna pick it up too.
It is on, it is in the Booker Road area where, uh, individual, I don't know if they septic tank, I don't know, I think you just got sewage running all down the backyard and just running all over the place. And when you go through there, it smells terrible, so I guess I'd, uh, be out tomorrow.
Thank you, Robbie.
Little more for, um, just a real big, um, work on a road, the contractor's done all the pipe installation on the work on road. So now they're preparing to move toward to their concrete work, that's your concrete driveways and then your curb cover. And then after that, we'll be on to, uh, paving and driving, sorry, paving and driving. Um, for E W P C zero four four, that's Lofton Lane, Brooklyn Drive and Churchill Road. The contractor has addressed the erosion issues on Lofton Lane. I received pitch this morning from my inspector. So they have addressed those issues, so, um, I guess I can request at least their, their payment, um, their final, uh, payment, that we've been, uh, approved in the last four years.
Robbie, you been out there to those?
I, I have not, uh, since he fixed, he just fixed them the past week, that, that side.
Man, some of the range, racial range we got over the weekend, it might change things.
Well, I just took, just took pitch this morning.
He said his inspector got pitched.
Okay, you're inspector.
He just took pitch this morning.
I will.
Scott?
What's that?
Seem like okay to you, late finals on that, those projects?
If your engineer says seven, yeah.
I mean, Mr. Dollar, you know what?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're here five days.
Okay, well, uh, we can make the motion subject to, uh, Mr. Dollar's.
Yeah.
Uh, inspection.
Yes, so.
Moved by Mr. Gaines?
Yes, sir.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
George, did you make the application to U S B A for reimbursement?
Yeah. Alright, the second, the next item on, on the E W P C zero four four is the final reimbursement for the project, um, the reimbursement this time. Um, the total reimbursement for the project, our reimbursement will be a total of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents. So we request authorization to allow the board president to sign the current reimbursement request in amount of one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and six six cents. That'll be our final reimbursement request for that project, so.
And that's the same project?
The same project.
Okay, moved by Mr. Gaines.
Say.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Alright, next I have, uh, E W P C zero four four, and that is for Old Highway eighty-four, site number one, four, Kitchen Road and Dunbar Body, it was the same thing as Old Ridge. Um, bid opening for that project will be during the August, August the eighteenth, board meeting, so it'll be August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at, uh, at ten AM.
Okay.
And it'll be the same thing for E W P C zero seven-nine, and that's Quicken Road and Kitchen Road, it'll be the same, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, when we open it, um, all people will be received by ten AM. Alright, um, the last item I have, well, we did submit the, uh, the last item I have is Foster Mountain Road, the bridge, uh, rail replacement project. So after going back and looking at potential, uh, uh, estimates for, we felt that it fall, failed in the threshold, we can just request quotes instead of actually having to advertise it. So I have a quote, uh, package prepared, and request authorization, request quotes for the bridge rail replacement, as well as the concrete post and spatial replacements on the Foster Mountain Bridge, number sixty-nine, and whatever damage to it, resulting from.
Did that, uh, guy have the car accident, did he have insurance? Are we going back on his insurance?
I don't, I don't think he had insurance, I took it with me, I wish it were right.
Question, didn't, didn't have the insurance.
Okay, we need a motion to do that, or?
I'll do that, it's permission, I'll mention this request for quotes, and if I do, now, uh, the quotes, uh, three contractors tomorrow.
Okay, so you need the motion?
I'll do it, I'll give, we're gonna make them to advertise, I mean, get quotes on the bridge on Foster Mountain.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
And we did submit all this, and we worked to, you need to, well, obviously, just wait another one, so if they do anything else.
Alright, thank you.
I, I got a question for you, um, uh. Old Ridge, Memphis County, that took class for, great, we were out there, and the contractor requested changing pipe, you know, under the road to do the, set the angle of it, to keep it from hitting that bank and things like that. Are we still looking forward for doing that? I know the county was wanting to purchase the pipe, uh, when that project was gonna be done, like, we had all our discussions.
The last discussion I remember about that project was, I wanted some slip line, but it probably.
Slip line, we don't, okay, I'll tell that.
And that would be handled by the county, could it be chief of the county to do it, opposed to having the contractor have itself, country, we had that conversation on the phone.
So you want the code to pipe, or we're gonna code it, instead of changing the pipe?
Yeah, that was the last discussion at the end. If y'all want some dick, I need to know, so I can make the adjustment to the plan. That's the last conversation we had, big one.
Just code, you don't.
That was last week, so.
Last day, contractor brought that to you?
No, that was the conversation you had.
Yeah, now?
Yes. Cause I can replace the pipe on the project, which was my initial intention, but after that conversation, you just.
I think we need a replacement, I, I mean, I, I think the slip cup talking, but my friend was there, he didn't, normally you could, oh, the guy, uh, Jason Smith, he called the pipe, we just dug it on there. But I mean, I, I would, on the county behalf, change the pipe.
And you also said also that you're gonna change the route of the pipe just a little bit to?
Well, he was, that's what he kept saying, where it turned out, it was going and tearing the bank up on the lady's side there, and she's in the past now, but on her side, that he wanted to try to move where the angle would go more.
Straight.
Straight, then he get on the side. But this is a long, very old year.
It's been a long, safety, a long time, so, uh, but I think, yeah, we need to change it, you know, change the pipe. Yeah. Alright.
Okay.
But, we still, we have time there to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
Did you have the final inspection on the project that, um, we were making the final payment to, I think it was Minor?
That was Lofton Minor.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So that's one of the ones, Mr. Dollar.
Okay, cause we, we've got to check, it's on the docket, but we're holding it till the final inspection.
I'll look at it and let you know.
Okay.
When I go look at it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I think you might be the last standing.
Alright. Look, I did a pretty little test about it, operated out of both phones, I could look, my ears and my hands and my, morning, multitasking. How y'all doing this morning?
Okay.
Good. Uh, I do have a couple things for you all this morning, I'm gonna start, let me pull my notes here. Just wanna let you all know that Academy Greg, wait this Thursday at nine o'clock A M at the safe room, so if some of you all wanna slide by, cheer them on, that'd be great. They're looking forward to seeing you all. Uh, I do have one new tire, Miss, Miss Colin, I don't know if you have it, the president?
I got the copy, I don't have it ready.
I have a copy too.
Okay, I got it, I got this right here, signed on this jersey. Uh, this is for Sean Davis, starting rate sixteen eighty-one, uh, for a dip.
Alright, you heard the question. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
I need this or no?
Is that the original?
Nah, I think the original, it's just a copy of the stuff. Oh, I brought up the jail roster the last time I was in here, and I do want you all to know that it, that it has, you know, on average, we average about ninety laces, ninety laces in jail, whether it's here, in the quarter, wherever. Right now, this is something I started doing earlier, we're letting y'all know, the jail family here, we have twenty-one right now in the average count of jail, and we have thirty-two across the river in the quarter as well. So I just wanted you all to know that, and the reason why I brought that up is because, as you know, we still working on getting numbers and figures. We had a three-hour meeting the other day, myself and Scott and several other people, with some contractors, to find teams, street, make sure that it's well-known that we are trying to save money for what we're trying to protect. So we'll be getting back with you all soon, as we, we're long overdue, engineers and bills and everything. It was a very, very, very disgusting meeting, but I just wanted to pass that on, because it's still what it is with the jail. As far as the cameras go, the camera guys will be here Wednesday, and so I got it on the list for the following part, because I'm not sure whether it's still working or not. But I'm gonna meet with them myself Wednesday, they come here Wednesday, and I'm gonna meet with them myself. And, uh, Liberty Road, and if you all have any other spots that need to address, I know the one out there on the backside of the range, that you may, I can't think of what the name of it is. Brand new neighborhood down there with the one, and all of them live there back there, but anyway, this brand new, it's a brand new neighborhood. Yeah, we know, yeah.
Well, they definitely cameras out there.
Yes, it is. What kind of camera you talking about? Project note. We got cram out there? Yeah, we had, uh, they had a guy out there in that particular neighborhood, that brand new neighborhood, one of the mental health patients had tried to break in, lay the house, and the neighbors surrounded him out there. And he was standing there with knives in his hand, saying, kill, kill, but the neighbor showed restraint and waited for him, my people get there, and my people got there, of course, they took care of him. But I mean, they had tased him and fighting and everything, but he lived, and nobody got hurt, and he was in the standoff, he had a bag up to the, to the woman's front door with knives in the hand, so that's what, that's what prompted them to want cameras out there. Because that guy, one of our, one of our more aggressive mental health patients decides to run off there, and he was trying to break in that woman's house. Cause that guy, one of our, one of our more aggressive mental health patients decides to run off there, and he was trying to break in that woman's house, and they got neighbors issue.
You say a new neighborhood?
It's a brand new neighborhood out there, y'all need to go look, you know, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about.
Where at?
At, you, matter of fact, well, remember when we went to do the, uh, the, the homeowners association meeting there?
Yeah.
I can't think of the name of that neighborhood.
Oh, you talking about Greenfield, huh?
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about that new one, okay, I know what you're talking about, but that's been there, that's been there, wow.
They want, they want a gate there, they're trying to, they want a gate.
It's, yeah, that's on the backside, yeah, that's on the backside of the range, y'all better sign, I know.
Of course, they're the range, they're in Greenfield, going up, I'm walking, playing.
I'm sorry, I was, I was reading other stuff that was coming up, I thought you bringing it up, maybe not, go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I'm getting through this, man.
I just wanted to let you know.
Some hills.
Is it some hills?
Yeah, woodland hills.
Woodland hills.
Woodland hills, that's, that's, that's a county's history.
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, they, they just have some people that come through there, and they're just like trolling around, and like, spot steel type things.
Yeah, but that's been there, that neighborhood been there.
They have public streets?
They are county streets.
I do. So at the last meeting, they asked that I already lettered for, um, on your behalf, to Cambridge Apartments, and, uh, both the owner and the manager, I talked to them, I just, I guess it's been a week or so ago, they were very excited, and they want cameras.
That is great news, and I've been watching the emails between you all.
What did they say, at Cambridge?
Cambridge Apartments.
That's the backside of Holiday Apartments.
Well, we know the Cambridge apartment, that's Maryland Heights, it's the backside of Maryland Heights.
What'd you say, you hear from supervisor?
I'm, I'm glad that they agreed for the cameras, but if you look on there, the backside of, of Holiday Apartments gonna be in Maryland Heights. And that's why they going down and coming behind the Holiday Apartments, cause they know, there's no cameras there, but I thought you spoke to had cameras in Maryland Heights.
Well, you do, now, I can't tell you which ones.
Do they work?
I can't answer that question right now, cause, you know, it's a city thing, that with Maryland Heights, Maryland Heights, they do probably.
I, I, I know this, but it's something that's been happening in Maryland Heights, and they say they got cameras, but when the time to review the cameras.
The last time I talked to one of the ladies at the housing authority, they told me that their, whoever, whoever installed, were coming back to get something, we're comfortable, and I had, I cannot say, standing here today, whether or not those cameras are working, or whether they not, or whether they are, or whether they aren't, cause, again, Maryland Heights did have a.
It's in Michigan or Minnesota?
A very expensive camera system put in, but the cameras heights was the one that I was asking about, but they don't.
Yeah, I know, I'm glad we got them, I'm glad we finally got them to agree to put cameras down there, but also, you and the chief of police need to reach out to Maryland Heights, to make sure that the cameras that they have are actually working.
You, you know supervisor Gray, a lot of people like to, listen, I'm gonna say this, safety and security is everybody's responsibility, I agree wholeheartedly, but I, but I do respect boundaries too as well. Now, anybody in the city who wanna contact you, know, they can call me in that drop it down, I love anybody, but it's in the city or outside the city, everybody knows that, and I do appreciate this board for making law enforcement a priority. Every time I ask y'all for training, y'all own rights, when I ask y'all for some money to put people out there in the streets, y'all did that, and it's been effective. Ms. Griffin sitting over here right now, she's been asking me for numbers and stats that she's gonna get today, and I'm gonna let her do her report, unbiased, on whatever she want to report on, but she's gonna get there. Far as we go, far as I go though, from what I see every day, them guys and them ladies, I've been putting in a lot of work at Cambridge, matter of fact, y'all don't even know, we had carjackings, you know why you don't know it? Because when it happened, within an hour, they had the car back, and the suspects in custody, that's, that's, that's what them, that's what we got, and they do it, and, uh, only your refresh release, something in the way. It has to be a priority for everybody, I'm not knocking the city, I'm not knocking anybody, but I can't just come in and take over, you know what I'm saying, I can't just come in and take over the city, that work like that, you have to be.
Oh, my, my idea was get with the chief of police, and, and, so when I'm reading out there, y'all working so closely together, that's why I say get with the chief, I ain't want nobody to step over that boundaries, that, I know how it works, cause I was with the city. My first thing say, get with the chief, because.
I do that, yeah, yeah.
To my knowledge, I thought we had an awesome working relationship, that, that's what they, making everybody think. I mean, with life on the line, uh, we need to come with the facts and not nothing else, that's just my opinion.
I understand, and I belong great with the chief, and I will reach out to you there, I've been in contact with Commander Jerry Ford this weekend, and represent what happened in the city. Matter of fact, one of the people out there sitting back here texting, that you blessed me, well, I appreciate it, cause you're on it, was him, I was sitting here texting him about information that we are gathering, uh, on these individuals, so again, I don't mind helping, you know, I don't mind helping anywhere I can help, and I'll be more than happy to reach out and offer our services again, but I've, I've done that so many times.
So let me ask you a question, Sheriff, I don't mean to cut you off, let me ask you a question, do you need this board to reach out to their board, or whatever it came may be, because this is a serious matter.
I think conversation needs to be had.
Okay.
I'm saying, I'm saying, I think conversations need to be had, and it ain't no issues between we and chief, they know that all that wonderful equipment that we worked hard to get over here, that if they need it, they got access to it. If they need manpower, we will come out, and we will do whatever needs to be done, and that's why me and the commander sitting here texting back and forth right now, you know, trying to help, cause I know that they're very short handed in the city, I will say that, look, they are very, very short handed over there, and, and my heart really goes out to them, cause I don't even know how they hanging on, with the amount of people that they have. And Sheriff, obviously, we, we pretty, we pretty fortunate, but it's, you know, we have to try to keep people in line too, you know, trying to be competitive, cause you got to stay in everybody's brain, and everybody trying to pull their resources away from here if they can, you know, what a lot of people don't realize, that now, this is Bureau of Investigations, have, they take away their power, but you gotta go through their academies to come work for them now, if you are seasoned investigator, they want you, and they willing to pay quite a bit of money to get you, so, it's a fight, it's a fight, we see real people running in, and so, we try to keep you happy by encouraging the heart, that's number one thing we do up in the board, we try to encourage the heart, and keep people, and try to hire people who wanna be in that industry now, so, again, back to your stuff, back to your, your issue. I will reach out to the chief, and I, I would say that, that the boards do need to talk, like, have serious conversations, we had a meeting set up with the city, but it got canceled because key players couldn't make it, so I know the mayor's gonna reach back out and try to set that people back up, and we'll be more than happy to assist in any way we can. Wanted to let you know, Ms. Con, we're here to reach cars, cause I know you be everywhere and everything, um, we have three mark units, one of our mark unit in the transport vein, that's now at Southern connection right now. We have two mark units at dealership waiting to go to Southern connection, and we have one that's still waiting to get to the dealership for the manufacturing, so I wanted to make sure that you, you were aware of it, cause I know those clocks on different vehicles, when they start on the different, so I wanted you to know that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, on the cameras again, if you all have any other cameras that I need to address this Wednesday, why those installers, I mean, I really even know it, uh, I got a carrier unit checking on there right now, trying to make sure which one of them were, who's running back, which ones have ever been installed, while we got these installed in, cause everybody's going to a smart city, trying to get to what they call a, yeah, smart city slash, I can't even make it up, I can't, real time crime, that's the other thing. And dispatch has taken steps to get there as well, but that, that guy that I told you about the last time that I met up with Jackson from the sun, really get him over here and talk to him, because their system can use anybody's cameras, and it'll let you monitor in real time, you know, I know you all had tried it, the liver thing, but I really wish you would just hear this guy out, so I hope we can get him next meeting, now, since y'all been hearing about, and see what Jackson does, if y'all know that Jackson crime rate is about fifteen percent in the city, that's because of what these people here have installed, that, that made life a lot easier on those cops up there, which is what you all want, is just imagine in the right form, and so, I hope that, and that's the card again, I hope y'all can get him in for the next meeting, and I'll go supervise, cause I think that would help everybody. And I will reach out to the housing authority today, to find out whether those cameras work, cause, again, that's not our normal area that we control, we come over there when people call us for help, but it's in the city, and we, we take care of the cameras as much as we can, and we help the city when we can, but I, I just can't answer that question, I don't know the answer to that.
You said the cameras, uh, services come in Wednesday or next Wednesday?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah, the stores will be here this Wednesday. Um, I do wanna tell y'all, now, I know y'all talked about getting the inmates from the prison down there, I really hope you all, we made it good, going from ninety on average to fifty-three, I mean, like, we don't have hardly any trustees. In the fifty-three at the end, I promise you, you don't want them nowhere to eat, you don't want them in your feelings, you don't want them out in the street, you don't want them anywhere else than where they are right now, so, far as trash that we having, we can certainly have those buildings doing, doing what they do as best right now, which is getting people out of jail, and I get that completely, and I'm not saying eat people in jail, pick up trash, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying that y'all gonna get those inmates, let me know, cause I'd like to have some of them myself, to see if we can work with these, and, you know, they can't work as long, cause they have to be picked up at a certain time, and picked back at a certain time, but them five hours they got, my home is really good, so, I hope y'all go ahead and do that.
Well, who initiates that contact? And where?
We need to do it, it's, it's, yeah, it'll be, it'll be the board, the head of the group.
Let me say this, since the city already have a plan in place, why we just can't ask them who they, uh, 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 hooked up with, because when I was over there, they had the same deal, and then we just contact that person?
I have to know.
Okay, then.
I, I'll send it to you.
They probably sent it to you.
I have to know, I know who it is, I, and I'll send it to you, but, I'm just letting y'all know, like, last month, we only was able to pick up sixty-five in trade, because of the, the two trustees we got right now over sixty-five. I'm laughing, because it's just like, it's amazing, you know, you, you solve one issue on one side, and you get on the other side, and you got this going on.
Hey, Sheriff, hold on, man, hold, hold, hold on.
I ain't knocking nobody over sixty-five.
I'm sixty-five, hold on, man.
Hey, I ain't knocking nobody over, I'm not knocking anybody over sixty-five, but, uh, but it's, it's a high level for the guys, so we try to make sure they stay hydrated.
You sure, right?
It's hot out there, and, and, and so, y'all got any questions for me, or?
That's what I was fixing to ask you, y'all got anything for the sheriff?
Uh, well, I got, please, I, I got something that. Southview Drive. Now, lady came to me in the store, telling me all the traffic on Southview Drive, she said, don't take my word for it, just come down there one night yourself, and you will see the traffic, I did that.
Who you talking about?
They got some serious traffic down on the end of Southview Drive, and they ain't got no story on that, that I'm aware of, so I don't understand why they got.
That guy, that, that individual's out on three bonds right now, but we, we won't stop arresting them, but they keep, that individual's out on three bonds right now, for that unoperational stool that you were carrying. I'm just saying it. I just, look at that.
Center of life, he'll get, he'll get where he needs to go.
Yeah. But, but, we're revisiting though, we'll do it again, cause we ain't gonna, we, we just, what we do is, we keep locking them up until they get what they deserve.
Let me ask you a question, Scott, uh, Southview Drive, where are we with the state on that, cause it's doing whatever, cause they still out there on the state property, like, with their property?
Yeah, the state has said that they, we, will give us permission to clean the property up.
No, let the state know they got illegal activities going on, on their property.
They offer, or they're supposed to send us over and offer to purchase that property?
Yeah, let me know what they got going on down there, some of that's going on on their property.
They out on three bonds.
Anything else for the sheriff?
I do have a question for you all though, do you all know owns that property between Maryland, Cambridge, and Holiday Apartments?
What you mean by that?
Like the, the wood of here that they come from, yeah, by, is that city property that somebody has profit over?
I think it, I think, I think.
I think it meets up.
And the reason why I'm.
Cambridge, I mean, Cambridge, and then Holiday Apartments meets up, and then it's moving back.
I, I walked off in the middle of the day, I went off of that value, and it's plenty of places that you can hide under, under those trees, I'm just wondering, if we can maybe talk to the people and get them to cut, clean. Want to have a place, want to have a place to hide, then? Y'all go ahead, any more questions?
Well, I, I tell you what we do, we, we need to get somebody to look that up.
I just want to know, right, here.
Because it, it almost look like it got a road that could have been.
It is, it is, and you can, you can easily see the path that they going through, how they come to, what apartment they go back to over there, I mean, it's plain to say, I walked myself, and it's an easy path to get through.
Could be a, a road.
Yep, as well as trap, that's all I can say.
Alright, Sheriff, I think I said we're gonna, we'll figure that out, uh.
Appreciate you helping me, Mr. Bill.
Public comment?
Appreciate you helping me, it, it's worth it.
Public comment?
Probably ten years ago, I met a guy in Illinois on a hunting trip, and, uh, he told me he ma, he worked for a company that managed housing developments in Nashville, and the day after that meeting, I reached out to him, and they own Cambridge Tops.
Yep.
And, uh, he said, man, we, we need any help we can get, so, I gave him sher, sheriff's number, and he did text me last week, said they're making, uh, progress with county and the city, and give me an update this week.
On both sides, on both sides.
Real nice guy from Michigan.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, Sheriff.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Public comments? Public comment? Alright, Ricky, you're on the hot seat.
Uh, first thing I need to do is, to the Democrat. It ain't nothing bad, it's just, uh, the photo that we had in the newspaper about the elective official deal, that was the Mississippi Minority Caucus Scholarship.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not the, uh, uh, the elective official scholarship, the next young lady that got the five hundred dollars was the one from us, but the thousand dollar was from the Minority Caucus, uh.
I'll correct that.
The, uh, I, I'm just gonna say this. This is my opinion, and, 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 uh, we got serious problem. I know the guy got killed in Holiday Apartments, and, and I know how, got an idea how, how that happened, but when, maybe I missed, maybe I ain't read this right, when you read an article, say something happened on Madison Street, and then it went to Woodlawn Street, and then it went to Prince Street, and shooting going on, and going all through these different streets, that's a problem. Anybody could have got killed. I just think we need to get with the city, and by any means necessary, we need to, law enforcement, they might not have enough, bless you, law enforcement, but we're lacking on. No law enforcement, or not enough law enforcement, that's why your cameras come in here, and if we gotta put cameras everywhere in this community, I, I, I don't care, because it's gonna save some people lives, now, y'all gonna get mad when I say this, but I'm saying it anyway. Now, when they go to shooting down there, when they got the balloon race, and, and all that kind of stuff going on, then we gonna get some attention. Now, when they go to shooting down there, and when they got the balloon race, and, and all that kinda stuff going on, then we gonna get some attention around here. I want that same energy when they shoot on Madison Street, when they shooting in Holiday Apartments, when they shooting anywhere else, we need that same energy over there. Because at the end of the day, people losing their lives. I got an email about, and this is a Democrat right here, y'all, a, a public eruptive request from the court. Is that y'all?
Oh, yeah, that's already been taken care of.
Okay. Did y'all found y'all a little bit? Now, Ms., Ms., Ms. Khan, uh, Ms. Khan, I mean, and I also got the email about the port, I mean, the airport director resigning. So, we got that kinda under control out there?
For now, yes, in that fact, I don't know what's the thing to talk about.
Okay. Uh... Yeah? I guess I ain't got that much today. We still have a serious problem when it come to... I guess we can get with the city with this too, because, uh, I just like the slogan, fight the blight. It, it, it's, it's do a disgrace to me. Even though I don't live on Union Street no more, that house burnt down, but I have grass growing all out in the streets. And you got those little kids over there, and they start, people coming over there, and they got grass growing all beyond the sidewalk, all out in the streets. That's bad. It need to be addressed. And I, I, I really don't care who get mad, but it need to be addressed, because the kids don't need to even be looking at stuff like that.
That's on the city right away, or...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hopefully, they're gonna do that with some of these prisoners, that's what they're supposed to be doing, cleaning up the streets, cutting grass racks, and hopefully, they'll get down there.
I hope so too, Mr. President, that's all I'm saying. But anyway, uh, I wanna congratulate the, uh, Coney Community College, our, our team for winning the national championship. I guess that's right.
Yep.
And, uh, my sympathy goes out to the King Patterson, head of classmate, uh, Michael Douglas Pass, Thompson, and the Reason Stewart, the Hargreaves, the Seal, the Strickland, and the Swag. And I guess we'll be praying for what's happening in Texas with all the death they had in Texas. And I did attend a funeral, Pastor Willie Joe Ellis. I just thought he was a normal guy in the community. But that funeral was at Bishop's Church in their church, and it had so many people at the funeral. But they was from Houston and Baton Rouge, and had a few family members from Nashville, but they had some lady named, uh, Kim Burrell, or some kinda gospel singer, and she really can sing, she was here, and, and everybody was pointing to her at the repaying, like, who, who, who was that? And they said, "That's the famous whatever, whatever." Wonder where she take a picture, I said, "Well, we finna find out," I went, "Oh, excuse me, man, because..." Anyway, she took a picture, but they had a lot of people in this community. And last, sheriff, uh, I wish, Mr. President, I wish I could be part of whatever discussion have, we have when it come to keeping our community safe, because all the little areas that he's talking about, I already told people that there's a blind spot over in that area, and, 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 and I, I just can't keep saying it until we gotta do better. I mean, the number one priority is to keep our community safe, our, our, the entire community safe. And I, I just think it's time for us to have a meeting, and, uh, do whatever we can to keep our people safe. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Hudson?
I don't have much, because I brought it, uh, to any early meeting. But, um, I do wanna say, uh, Scott Greenfield, uh, property two, I mean, two sixteen and two eighteen have been cleaned. And, uh, we got pictures, Robert, he took pictures, may sound...
He swore up and down, he wasn't gonna do it.
Paul Rayd came at the office with the wind, but he needed it.
Oh, it's, I guess when he got that, that he was coming to his public hearing today, they cleaned it up. Out there on, uh, on the branch, uh, on Greenfield.
Power persuasion with Mike.
It's cleaning up, yeah, it, yeah, I should have known that for then. But, yeah, the property got cleaned. And the, uh, other thing I have is just an executive session.
All right.
I had to be to town.
Uh, I don't have much either. Uh, a few announcements, uh, I think it was before the weekend, the sheriff, uh, we had a car, I had a call from Southwest, Atlantic, and they thought somebody was reading the meters illegal, but, uh, I will make that announcement for the public. They are, they are having contractors, they cleaning line. And just so happened, when it come, I didn't think about it until I went back and seen the contractor. You do have a crew in the front of the, you got two crews, one crew is cleaning your service going to your house, and the other crew is cleaning the two-phase and three-phase line. So, basically, what happened, somebody went there and they cleaned the, cleaned the residents in the country, cleaned a, uh, service going to their house, and they was writing the numbers off, meaning they thought somebody was impersonating the, the light people, so that was a scare. So, I do want to make that a public announcement, that we do have crews in the area, uh, cleaning our power lines. So, they come through every six years. So, you know, the, the lady had called sheriff about the same time, and after I got home, I thought about it. Because, uh, I had to call a guy, because I got a lot of chewing out the last couple of weeks about the county cutting limbs and leaving limbs. The county does not clear power lines. The county do not cut limbs, I, I, I like to say that, we don't have, we don't do that, that is, uh, your debt coming to clearing that. But I had the guy number, because I said, "Man, you gonna have to go back and pick up some of these limbs." And he did, and, uh, I thought about my calling, and then I meet the caller sheriff, and he said he did have people in that area. Uh, so I wanted to make, you know, that announcement, and just touching on that, not to, look, uh, my heartfelt sense of prayer goes out to both sides of the family. When you lose somebody, you know, that's the victim, or even the shooter, I mean, it's, it's their crime is a problem. But I just always go back to my basic thing I say all the time. I could have a conversation with the sheriff, we could have a conversation with Mr. Gray, but until we come to the table together, and try to get on one court and do something, there's nothing that, that we can do, we can all have ideas, so I think it's a good thing that we can try to come to the table on that, because I always say, a murder at Adams County, it don't fit what community come out of. If somebody's looking to visit Adams County, the murder rate affects everybody here. It's affected tourism business, it's affected families, it's hurting, it's affecting people come to visit with those things, so, uh, I think there's something that needs to be tackled as a whole, and thank God it hasn't been no more than what it is, because we do have, I look at our Memphis right up there, if you look at Jackson, then thank God crime is not quite as bad. Um, and, and another announcement, I would like for, I'll say, not only my constituents, but a lot of other constituents that know. I, I really don't think a lot of constituents realize that we have a road department to call a lot. A lot, I get a lot of calls, a lot of people don't call the road department. Uh, like, I have a few, I guess the heat, have a few disgruntled customers say, I mean, constituent, the pipe I been cleaning, the pipe I been cleaning, I have two hundred miles there, we riding around like that. If, we do have our road department, that you can call and put a worker on it, and if the work is not done, then you know we can check on it, but we definitely can't clean what we don't know. So, give us the road department, and give us an opportunity to, uh, fix it, but we do need to report it. And, um, as a hint, my, my prayer goes out to all the bereaved families, and, uh, we as a community need to definitely pray together for our community. A year or four.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Milton?
Yes, sir. Oh, a few things, Ms., Ms. Khan, I know you're busy right now getting in budget at the time, but I do wanna look at the, uh, travel budget over the past year, not necessarily, um, travel that was reimbursed, but travel that came out of county's money, where, what was budgeted and what was spent, that's countywide. Um, a couple of people have hit on the issue with city and county on sirens. I did watch that meeting, uh, pulled it up to watch it, and, and it rubbed me the wrong way as well. Um, you know, there were a few questions about, uh, being budgeted or whatever, it's, it's not budgeted, it's an unbudgeted expense. Uh, we have worked well with the county. I personally, and when we did our paving, Mr. Dollar can vouch for it, I paved roads in City Limits. When, when they talk about the airport and helping with the airport, the city's gonna benefit more than that than anybody's gonna benefit from that, with sales tax. Uh, one certain supervisor over there made the comment that he was tired of paying the county's bills, but he puts his foot in his mouth all the time, so it didn't surprise me, honestly. Um, the next thing I do, I wanna pray for, uh, those families in Texas. Uh, I, I, I just cannot imagine taking my child to camp and, and getting that phone call. Um, not, not just the children, there were a lot of people affected. Um, but kids, eight years old, hanging from trees for thirty-six hours, I mean, it's just absolutely terrifying. Um, I do wanna pray for the Jenkins and the Carby family, Miss Betty Jenkins was a staple in this community, and, and did a lot on that river. Uh, she passed away, and, uh, I don't know if you said it or not, Ricky, but, um, and then to hit on kinda what Mr. Gaines just said with the road department, we do get those calls about, you know, they don't do anything, blah, 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 you know, but any of those people can go jump a truck around them if they want to. Those guys work their butts off, excuse my language, but, uh, they're understaffed, uh, they're underpaid. They need more help, and they need more money. Um, they don't know what they're, they're up to their elbows on Carpet Point Road trying to get it out. Uh, trying to jump around and cut grass for these people and those people, and they had to do it for me last year. Um, but we gotta find a way to get some help for the road department, because what's the county road miles? Five hundred? That number hadn't changed.
Yep.
Only get bigger.
And, and he is probably half of what it was, I don't know, fifteen years ago. So, we gotta find a way to help the road department. Um, it's a thankless job. Um, and, and, and unfortunately, they don't, I did, I did get a call last week from somebody, I don't know if Meg told you, but I got a call from somebody, I said, "Oh, boy, here we go." And, uh, he's, he said, "I just wanna thank the road department for taking care of our road out here." And I was like, "Wow, thank you." I called Meg, let her know, because, look, you don't get those calls. And, uh...
I, I will say, when they had the tree that was burning, I went down there to see, you know, because they had the road locked up, and, and the guys were very nice, very polite. They had everything moving and going, so, yeah, they, I was very impressed.
You don't know what they do till you get out in the trenches, well.
That's right.
And I, and I'm not out there with them much, but I've been out there enough to, like, if they y'all, they good. And, uh, anyway, I wanna try to find a way to do something in that road department, get some more help in there, because they need it. The residents deserve, I mean, the residents, I mean, everybody needs it.
Not to mention that every time one of the storms blows up in the afternoon, they, they might be off, they have to go right back out there again, uh, you know, and every time I put a call, Robbie, that everything, whatever I called him about was taken care of in an hour or two, so...
I'm saying something.
Always, always take care of him.
Thank you, that's my report.
Paige, would you?
Um, I have the July board order, you know, I decided, um, stating that the tax assessor's office has equalized the real and personal property rolls. They delivered them to our office on time, um, and also to, um, get permission to advertise this notice from the newspaper, so that the public can come and view them for two weeks.
Give me on that, the tax assessor's report. Mission finally, re, could they, could, revocation of tax assessor's file, the assessor on, for advertising.
He advertised.
Okay, so you didn't motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Milton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
Um, powers would like for us to spread in our minutes, um, asking that, or stating that the board pays for the employer and employees' purse portions underneath the AFR of the transferred clerk and the circuit clerk.
Uh, you need to spread across? All right, need a motion, spread that across the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Milton, any discussion, all in favor?
Mr. President, I do have one question. So, y'all, do you feel like the rate changed, it affected July first, twenty twenty-five, or the powers do, is that something we have to? But no, no, it's just, it's just...
It's something you did a budget for.
I, I know I had a budget for, but you don't need to do any.
No, it's...
All in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
Um, I have the St. Catherine Creek Utility Authority renewal for their insurance. Um, we had to get a new company, so the rate is actually going to be cheaper this year than it was last year. Uh, it's going to be eight thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
All right, I need a motion to, so I can sign this. St. Catherine Creek. Moved by Mr. Milton. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
And I just need to spread across the minutes, um, the insurances for the county, which is the county lending, had all the professional liability and auto insurance policies. So...
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Slower?
On May sixth, twenty twenty-five, we advertised for three twenty-nine Southmore Drive. We adjudicated it a menace on June second, and after June thirtieth, or on June thirtieth, it still hadn't been cleaned, so... Excuse me?
I'm sorry, it's called, is that called?
Yes, so as of June thirtieth, we cleaned it because it hadn't been cleaned at, by that day.
Okay, okay, got you, got you.
I need a motion, cost us one thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. The statute allows us to also do a penalty of either half the cost or fifteen hundred dollars, um, whichever is greater. So, if the board's prerogative, they can put a penalty on the taxes as well. But we need a motion to assess at least the one hundred dollars back on the tax roll, and decide if we do a penalty.
Is this moved by Mr. Gaines? Second, second by Mr. Gray, discussion.
Is this a recurring property?
Yeah.
This, this has happened before?
Yeah.
Okay, then there needs a big penalty on it, and I put, I say we do the max penalty?
It's in the middle, we don't have something to do with it.
Who is it?
It's in, it's, it was in, it's in the midst of somebody, a little, you know, we don't have something about this, somebody, people's trying to buy the property, so...
Going off there, sir.
But, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we pulled it back in twenty twenty-four, but they did clean it back then.
Prime taxes should be responsible, responsibility.
This is the first time we cleaned it?
No.
This is the first time we cleaned it?
Oh, yeah?
We did, we did contact them before.
No, we had contacted them, they did it before.
Okay, it wasn't that recurring, yeah, okay.
Okay. Next time, they get it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, motion carried.
I have a mark that is just the assessment. I have a mark that is just the assessment.
Okay.
Just making sure I got it right. We have lease purchase with Delta Bank, looks like that, we've got paperwork done, chief approval of the actual lease purchase, this is for some air equipment?
There were pieces of air equipment that we just, I think we'll wait on the way to get back.
Back on the road.
Twenty twenty-five, Excalibur, Maco, and Will Luger.
Yeah.
Have we received that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So any motion to approve?
Oh, whoa.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
They may also need a resolution.
Yeah, I said she was taking care of that, that's the last piece thing.
I got the minutes, so I'm to give to...
So she need to get it out for that.
All in favor, uh, any nays, motion carried.
It just is that email page that's got everybody, because Carrie's been doing all the kind of work and all the work.
She always does the paperwork? There. The Fair Bridge Inn has going to be taxes in the amount of...
Is that the one, how about the other one?
It's a mount, yeah, it's the, no, it's the one over on Deborah.
Okay.
Thirty-three thousand dollars, I actually found this working on something else.
Third one on the corner?
Right, it's for twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four taxes. It's the one that's...
The one sitting back off the road behind, Dog Captain D's that, uh, has a car out there, that's the only place I have a sign.
I was working on something else, saw that, figured we could go ahead and file suit and maybe start collecting on that, and did notice that it's also listed for sale, so we might want to take action with the board, or maybe get a new owner and make, make it more difficult to collect them. If that's okay with the board, I'd need a resolution authorizing that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
It's been a little while since we've looked at our personal property taxes, as y'all know, that's not something that's automatically collected like your land sales, which has a pretty good collection rate, sometimes personal property. Also the wayside, I've got a point too, I can pull and take a look at some of the higher and more collectible claims, and we can start sending letters out, if that's okay with the board?
Absolutely.
MDA sent a packet for the cap loan for nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've looked at the paperwork and it looks like a standard promissory note, we promised to repay. MDA, the interest rate is at two percent. And... This would be for the ball fields that we had kind of requested to do, for the locker rooms, I mean? For a twenty-year note?
No, the restrooms first, what?
Restrooms.
We're gonna have to do it two different.
That's the max that a cap loan can be, so if we want to do a second phase, we can reply, go and apply next year.
Yeah, we're gonna do the restrooms first.
Right, I'm not, I was just talking about borrowing the artist.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, you need to spread across the minutes, any motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
On Robbins Lake Dam, I've been in communication with the attorney, uh, from the insurance company on it. He's going to recommend they put paid reclaim, and so we're awaiting that. He said it should get back to me today, if that's the case, we should get that one in, not, um, you know. It's basically an issue of our contract, and I'm, we're right, I think, and they're wrong, and the attorney agrees with it, but the insurance company, if they will, go ahead and push that particular issue, and we'll probably get closed out, Alex, they'll be in sixty days.
Yeah.
And that glue is not reported?
Why, he's on Robbins Lake, I tell them, for, uh, you know, we got those cyclones in, there's big sheet of drill holes, and we've lived in the big stone, they break and cool blue pipe. We've been discussing and talked to the guy in Jackson, and Mr. Eddie and all, and, uh, I think we're gonna offset the side of the pipe, put a piece of ten-inch pipe in it, go out, lower it, nally it up, put some holes in it, so it gets a certain level of trains itself, they can't tamper with it or get out and do it, to do it, uh, stake that as fine with it. Be a little more money, but I think I can find it in my budget, which I have to buy cyclones, you know, pipe ten-hands, I think, but the cost of that, a little more, it'll be done, but I just want to let the board know, I think we fixed a completely easy way of trying to keep it low. Without somebody putting...
Just save your money alone.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, before you move on, Scott. Have, have they, uh, started doing it a different way, we pay all the attorneys now?
Well, we can what now?
Have they started doing something different, the attorneys we pay, because sometime it goes over what I thought?
I will look and check, that might have been for an extraordinary issue, but I'll check and see, if there was one that I don't know.
So my question is, if, if we budget a certain amount, and if we go on over what we budgeted, then where the money coming from? Or it just don't be in the...
They don't have to pay from the general fund, and they, the circuit judge does not have to go by our budget, they can approve whatever they think is reasonable per case. So I'll take a look and see and give...
So that's the way it's set up?
That's the way law, state law is, it's, it's what they, what the circuit judge finds is appropriate per case.
So, in, in the future, we need to budget a bit more money in that, just in case something like this happens?
I would, we should look at that for budgeting purposes. Again, Ricky, it might just be where this was a particular murder, that was more egregious, had more, because she paid him more, but that's...
I think if they go to trial, and it's a lengthy trial, that's the one I think that she's ordering us to pay.
If you spent twenty-two hundred hours on the case, you know, that she might find it appropriate for more.
Thank you.
The only way that you can keep a public defender in, in a budget, is if you adopt a public defender office, and then they have to budget, that's the only way.
Well, they disposed three hundred cases in the last two years, probably, so that's why the jail count's so that far down.
Well, some of it is they've...
DA.
They've retalked them out.
Okay. Ye- yes, ma'am?
Okay, I have a budget amendment that came from the sheriff's department, they're just moving five thousand dollars from one account to another to cover costs for, um, some of the equipment that was taken.
Okay. You heard the request? Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried.
So, um, I'm the same ones, we were talking about the sirens, and it's gonna have to come out of general fund, and unless, so unless, well, if the city pays, then it'll be less, but I'm adding, um, sixty thousand dollars to, um, to the, uh, uh, equipment and mobile equipment that's over five thousand dollars in the budget to cover that, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
We said that's over, and sixty thousand...
For the sirens, because it's, we're just not in the current budget, so we just move, uh, sixty thousand.
So we need a motion.
So...
By Mr. Middleton. Sorry, by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, the only discussion I have, we, uh, using a lot of money out of the general fund, so, uh, could you send me an email of the balance? Thank you.
All in favor? All right, any, any nays, motion carried?
Okay, and, uh, the last one I have is just, um, pointing at negative cash balances in some of the funds. Um, they either haven't gotten their funds in, or they will, and they do, I'll reverse it back, if this is just, um, standing out where they're not zero balances, like this distribution.
Okay, you heard the request? Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Green, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
And then I thought orientation was my day, it ended up being Tuesday, so I'm just submitting my leave for the extra day, and I think I just need to get y'all through that extra day.
Okay, uh, you heard the request? Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
Then I received, oh, wait.
No, no, it's official.
Okay, then I received a, um, order from Judge Aronio, um, to increase the pay of, um, which, official court reporter for the county court and youth court, um, raising it to seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars, I think it just has to be spread over the minutes.
Move that.
They got an order?
Okay. Order from the judge, yeah.
That's an order we wanted.
What is in there?
That's an order, a quick.
It's an order, an order to do what?
Do what?
Raise salary to court order.
You know, it came before, it was...
Yeah, that was...
Yeah, it came before and whatnot.
Motion, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion?
So, Mr. President, so, uh, what is our pushing, we gonna pay?
This is a county court, so it's a hundred percent honest.
This is...
Well, there's, it's not so AOC, so the AOC has a month's on it, they did per court, so, but whatever the difference is of price, I mean, normally they're getting, whatever the olden is, will probably would be all on us.
So when do it take effect, immediately?
July first.
Well, it would take on effect probably since we didn't order it in early, July fifteenth, or whatever.
So that's another one of the ones coming out of the general fund. Yeah, I do need to find out the money we got.
All right, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
I think that was easy stuff.
It was so easy about it.
Well, for me, it was paperwork, sorry, Harry. Um, as y'all know, Richard Nelson sent in his resignation letter, um, I think we have to get it approved by the board to accept it, and then also to advertise for the decision.
Okay, need a, uh, motion to accept the resignation and advertise for a new port, airport. Moved by Mr. Middleton, moved by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
Did, did, did you say why he...
Did you not, you didn't read it?
Yeah, I don't know, but...
There's this reason?
Why he leaving, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, Mr. Harry, to your, to your question, um, Larry Matthews is running the day-to-day operations. Um, we had a five thirty-four meeting last week, which we had it already scheduled, so it wasn't anything that was a special, and, um, we would, I would like to contact Mr. Pummelroy to see if he'd at least be here, so we get a permanent person in, if, if there's no objection.
I thought I had his number, but I don't see it.
So that, that's my...
Well, I can get it.
We all are using yours to make a way with Philly, and we did have a, uh, passport to rent.
Hope he's not used up.
Yeah, yeah.
You did. Okay, so do we need a motion for that, uh, to?
Yes.
I don't need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion, all in favor? Uh, any nays, motion carried? Okay.
Then that's the reflect, the advisory board, make it for recognition.
Um, so the advisory board also recommended, right now we're running twenty-four seven, and we were running it because there, is it airbag, that's not six myself, was, um, fueling at night, where they have their own fueling system set up now, so they would like to put the hours back as they originally were.
Which was?
Six to eight? Six AM to eight PM, and they'll have an emergency...
Fourteen hours, then?
If, if, um, it's either eight or ten, I can't remember, but they'll have an emergency number, if somebody like an airbag needs fuel, that they can call, and somebody will, will go out.
Okay, you heard the question? Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
Okay, so the other thing is that, um, they would like to get the South Star fuel pump back up and running, that way that they can get fueled with their credit cards, with, if, one of them, that's a space and can't come out of the fuel lot, they can do it in sales. It's gonna cost about seventeen hundred dollars to fix it, and then a minimum monthly fee for this, um, set of wash diapers for the water to work.
You heard the request? I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second, Mr. Gaines, second, any discussion?
I think it would, like, like says, to do it anyway, if we're gonna shut down at eight, or...
Yeah.
A person might come in even early before six, maybe eliminate somebody, probably might not affect fuel saves as well.
All in favor? Any nays?
I just want to make sure, I was gonna say, discussion, is all of that's gonna be within the FFA rules and guidelines for something for them to get fuel and all that, you know?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. I mean, they had it before, and it went down when nobody reviewed it, so, um, this is a side note, so the FAA had called about the roof, did, did we talk about this at the last meeting? So I got an email from the FAA, uh, one of the FAA, um, uh, individuals that come out to the airport, and they have their weather equipment in, um, back with Southwest, but in one of the back areas, the roof has been leaking, if you're standing in front of it, the tunnel, has been leaking on the left side, and, um, debris is falling on their equipment, and so they've been asking it for it to be repaired for probably six months, and it hasn't been repaired. They've somewhat patched the roof, but it's still leaking because waters still come in from somewhere. Um, Johnny went out with me and we looked at it, and he's had three referees to go out and look at that, and, um, and he can hopefully we'll get a recommendation in the near future, so I just want to put y'all on notice that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to probably replace the roof, I don't think it can be repaired.
It didn't have, it didn't have to do with stones, what I'm wondering, is this...
It's been leaking for a long time, yeah.
No, I don't get away with that.
So Johnny's, Johnny's taking a bow on that one, I believe.
Okay, is that the main building of the airport?
No, it's the main building, it's got the pitch roof in the center.
So the back is...
And then it's not, and then it goes flat on both sides, so, um, I told him to get the contractors to look at the other side, just, just to see, and that side has cinder blocks on it, where people can walk, and they have a cable out there, an old grill, um, so we kind of put that one on the back burner. We haven't seen a leak yet.
Same one over there.
So we're keeping our fingers crossed, but, um, we're gonna fix the part, the left side first, and then we'll, we'll deal with the other side.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll bring a proposal back, hopefully, at the next meeting, that's, um, to, the advisory board will hopefully have, will have the bids, and they can, um, give you a recommendation.
All right.
Um, there's some other things that need to be fixed out there that just haven't been done, need to follow up fences and things, and things like that, and I've told Larry to, you know, fix what needs to be fixed. We, we need the fence, uh, because of, you know...
The bigger?
The deer, and so I told him to go ahead and, and start looking at trying to get that repaired, um, and there's some other little things that need to be done, but, um, other than that, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's functioning, I gave, told Larry, you know, he, he knows how much fuel he has in the tanks, if it's low, I'll tighten, oh, that was the other thing I need y'all to improve. Um, we have not, we didn't have a quorum the other night, that's why we met, was to pick a fuel vendor. So I need the, the advisory board asked, that I asked the board supervisors to approve an additional money extension for, um, Titan to be our fuel provider.
Until y'all get the contract. I need a motion. Time, they're gonna stay there until we think they decide.
We need another agreement of extension.
Until they, advisory board can get together. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Most curious.
We, the board, um, advisory board decided to table the, um, the proposals we got from the engineer firm to have a project in there, decided, they decided to table it, until we get a new director, and then either not do that, or probably re-advertise if they decide that it's, it would be a good idea to have a, an engineer to oversee the projects.
Okay.
Uh, when I hit my knee, and I slammed the door a while ago, I was trying to answer the phone, um, an Acadian representative was going out to the airport today to look at a T-hanger that came open, to see if that would work for the helicopter, instead of giving up the whole, they wanted the whole, um, other side of the community, and they wanted it for cheap, and we had, we, we can't just let them have the whole, the whole side, other side of the community hangar, because we have five or six planes that stay in there from time to time, and, and they pay, so, um, uh, I called Don Payware, he's the president of advisory, and he was gonna ride out there, and Larry, I, I let Larry know he was coming as well to look at it. Um, so we still kinda, that's still coming on, um. I think that was it on the airport, unless y'all have any other questions?
Got it, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and I probably talked about the letter that we got from Cambridge, um, or that, that caller got from Cambridge, um, manager here and the guy from Michigan, um, they were very excited and, and are very receptive to having cameras put in, to, to their conflicts, so, um, I think the owner is coming in next week, I think, Sheriff Patton, and I think he wanted to catch up with you when he was in matches, so he said he was gonna reach out via email when, um, he had his, his itinerary skipped out. And then I think the other couple things I have is executive session.
Okay, that's all you have?
I think so, there's a lot going on, and I've got, I'm working on the budget, um, I've got most of those, I mean, I've got a couple, but I've got enough to keep it going, I'm not, not waiting on anyone, so.
Scott, have you, uh, had any com- comments with, uh, infrastructure about, uh, finding out how many, uh, active trash interceptors we have?
We've got a designated person, and I've sent a letter requesting, uh, account.
And do we know where we're at on the, uh, lawsuit?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we've got a response for our discovery, the, one of them that we wanted answered, they didn't answer, so we have to file a motion to compel on that, and then the remaining discovery is due either today or tomorrow.
I know we've breached this subject several times, or broached this subject, uh, I still think we need to get RFP from the other garbage contractors, so we don't go, get into an emergency situation, uh, they're, it's not gonna cost us anything. All we have to do is advertise. Now we're getting a lawsuit asking for.
I mean, I'm saying, I don't know, but I don't.
What we're gonna get into is, we're gonna have to get in an emergency situation, and it's gonna cost us more, so this would save us money. Would you say any reason we get a lawsuit for, uh, doing RFP?
So, Mr. President, you assuming that we gonna win?
Anytime you file a lawsuit, you assume you're gonna win, because the facts are in your favor.
So.
They didn't have insurance?
No, 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 I don't know.
So I don't know.
The question I'm asking is, if it was an open and shut case, why we just didn't file a suit ourselves, why we had to go allow somebody else to do it in case it didn't work, we wouldn't get sued?
You, you, that's an attorney question, or?
Executive sessions, I'm not talking, scrap these sessions.
Okay, let's, uh, I need a motion to, uh.
Before we do.
Unless there's something else.
One of the overweight settlements with Purdue Pharma has come in from our group, our plaintiff's attorney's had recommended that we settle, you know, and we need to go ahead and do that. Seven motions you approve on? Seven of Purdue Pharma and Steclovan?
Uh, you know what the, uh, number is, or? I see that's why Ricky's over there.
What we settled?
Yeah, it just has, it's like nine hundred million dollars. It's similar to what we received.
So you just need a, um, motion to accept? Motion to accept the, uh?
Text us the amount.
I accept.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries?
Scott, text us the amount.
I will look and see what happens, we gotta, I'm guessing, listen.
Okay.
Let's share it out of my way.
All right, now I need a motion. Close termination. Moved by, just had to say, by Mr. Gaines. All in favor?